Okay, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, September 12, 2022, to order. All members of this board are present. At this time, I would kindly ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I continue on with the agenda, I would like to acknowledge that each member of the board, the manager, as well as Bev, are wearing an article of clothing or a pin that is reflective of the color gold, which is to bring attention and awareness to the fact that it is child cancer awareness for the month of September. So we appreciate all members doing this and members of Town Hall. And I'd like to specifically thank select person Misselli for making this suggestion for us as a board to do this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to the transmitting of the Treasury warrants. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. We do not have any minutes to approve. We are running slightly behind schedule. We apologize. Our first appointment was scheduled for 7:00. It's with Matt Keagle, who was the project manager for Procopio Companies. It is a public hearing for the permit to remove earth for the property located at 20 Lowell Street, excuse me, 203 Lowell Street in Wilmington. Is Mr. Keagle here this evening? Good evening, sir. So we do have an assembly here. If you'd like to join us, it is a public hearing, so if you can just have a seat and make yourself comfortable, I'd like to talk to the public a little bit about the procedure for a public hearing. So I'm going to take this moment to read the public hearing notice into the record. This notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen in Wilmington Town Hall, located at 121 Glen Road, Room 9, in Wilmington, Mass. At 7:00 PM on Monday, September 12, 2022, on the application of Matt Keagle, Civil Project Manager for Procopio Companies, to remove earth products on a land situated at 203 Lowell Street, Wilmington, Massachusetts, and further described as parcel 73 on Assessors Map 48, and shown on a plan on file with the application for said permit. It is offered by Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman for the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. This notice has been published in the August 24, 2022, and August 31, 2022, editions of the Wilmington Town Crier, and may be viewed by going on to their website. So at this time, I wanted just to confirm with Bev that the legal notice has been posted and ask if you deem the application as complete. Okay? Thank you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for purposes of considering an earth removal permit as described. Do I have a motion at this time? Motion's been made, and I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. The public hearing is now open, so I'd like to offer some basic ground rules, that any comments will be limited to the subject of the application. I'm going to start with providing an opportunity for comments or a presentation from Matt, from the applicant, followed by comments and recommendations from the staff, which will be provided by our town manager, followed by offering fellow board members an opportunity to offer comments or ask questions. And then I will be asking the audience if they have any questions or would like to offer a comment. And then any questions or comments should be directed to the chair. So at this time, I would like to ask the applicant to please state your name, your company name, your address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Matt Keagle. I'm the Civil Project Manager for the Procopio Companies, offices located at 35 Village Road, Suite 702, in Middleton, Mass.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. So just to confirm, just for purposes of public record, that the certified receipts and green cards to notify the abiders has been completed and provided?
Yes.
They are?
Yes, and already.
Okay. Thank you very much. So at this time, the floor is yours. If you'd like to give a presentation to us at this time, that would be great.
Sure. Yes. We have an approved project at 203 Lowell Street for a multifamily development. The course of that involves a lot of earthwork. Our calculations estimate that we will be needing to remove approximately 5,000 cubic yards of earth materials from the site. We will attempt to utilize whatever we can, be crushing rock, that sort of thing, for material to be reused. And then we've also teamed up with local landscape companies for any excess materials to help distribute around town.
Okay. Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about when this earth removal process will start, what type of route structure you're going to have to do the removal?
That, sure. I'm sorry. The process has started. The trucking route is right from our entrance off of Lowell Street, straight to I-93 will be the main route for hauling these materials away.
And you said that process is underway. How long do you think it'll take to complete that process?
The bulk of that will probably be done, if granted approval, within the next two months, I'll say.
Madam Chair, I'm confused. You said the process has started and did not...
We haven't, we haven't trucked any material away. We've started the earthwork process, so we have stockpiles on site, that sort of thing. Sorry.
So I drove by this weekend, and you certainly have piles.
There are some big piles, yes.
So the chances I haven't removed much, because there's quite a bit there.
I have not, no.
Okay. So that's helpful. Okay. At this time, you had provided the green cards as indicated. The presentation is here. Do we have any comments or questions from any members of the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
Where are most of the materials being shipped to?
Like I said, we've got a local landscape company, Burns Landscaping, who we work closely with. They help us, we help them. If they need some of the extra material, we let them have that. We do have a couple of other sites, one located in Wyndham, Mass., and the other is in Wyndham, New Hampshire, is probably where the bulk of those materials will be going.
Just for referencing, my curiosity, have you ever approached the town to see if they needed fill anywhere?
I have not. I don't think that is something we have considered, but if...
I don't know if they do or not. I'm not speaking for them, but, you know, maybe a little communication could go there. And if they need fill, it's there.
Sure. Sure. No, that's certainly an avenue we can explore. Yep.
So prior to entertaining other comments and questions, I'd like to ask the manager for the recommendations that you've received.
So I received one recommendation from the building inspector, indicating his department has no issues with the issuance of this permit. And then the other recommendation comes from Paul Looney, the town engineer. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the application for permit to remove earth materials within the town of Wilmington for the above referenced project. The applicant is proposing to remove approximately 5,039 cubic yards of material from the project site to accommodate the grading requirements to complete construction of 3,100 square-foot bank, a 23,788 square-foot retail office building, and a 50-unit residential building. The project received approval from the planning board in 2019 to construct the project. As such, the DPW recommends granting the earth removal permit, subject to the following conditions, and there are 14 conditions that are established in the recommendation. Additionally, I have a recommendation from Valerie Gingrich, the Planning and Conservation Director. The project located at 203 Lowell Street received planning board approval in 2019 for the construction of 3,100 square feet of bank, 23,788 square feet of retail office space building, with retail on the first floor and office on the upper floor, and 50 residential units, as shown in the plan entitled Site Development Plan 203 Lowell Street, Wilmington, Massachusetts, dated October 18, 2018, last revised on September 5, 2019, prepared by Douglas Lee's P.E. PLS, Land Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc., 130 Middlesex Road, Tinsborough. The plan submitted for earth removal permit are the plans that were approved by the planning board. As such, granting the special permit is recommended.
Thank you. So returning back to fellow board members, any questions or comments from anyone else? Yes, Mr. Vindal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a good evening.
Thank you.
Just a question. If you could specify, you mentioned that trucks are going to head towards 93. Is that towards Woburn or towards Redding?
Towards, they'll be heading down Lowell Street towards 93, and depending on if they're going to the Wyndham site, they'll obviously go south towards Woburn. Yes.
Yes.
What are your hours of operation going to be for hauling end of it?
We've noticed that there's some conditions in these recommendations from the Public Works and the trucking hours, the hours for rock crushing. Those are no problem. We can abide by those hours.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the audience. Would anyone like to ask a question or make a comment? Yes, if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Suzanne Sullivan, 60 Laurin Street. I'm just a little bit concerned. I just happened to go through this parking lot a couple of weeks ago, because another member... Just a little, do you want me to restate my name? I was just a little concerned, because a couple of weeks ago, another member of the Headwater Stream team cut through the parking lot, because we were trying to track down some water quality issues in Maple Meadow Brook. And when we were going through the parking lot, I noticed that there were two piles of contaminated soil that had been stockpiled on top of one of the hills behind DEP. And I took photos of it, and one of the piles, you can tell they're covered over with plastic, and the plastic's all torn. It's been, it's been there for a long time. One of the piles has some wattles around it. The other pile didn't have any wattles around it, and you could see where sand had leached out through the pile and gone into one of the catch basins. I took some photos of it. I sent it to the town. I did hear back from Valerie, and, you know, Valerie told me that it was contaminated soil from 204 and 207 Lowell Street. And so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about that for a lot of reasons. First of all, how do, you know, the assurance that the soils that are going to be removed through here are going to be handled properly, because these two piles are not being handled properly. They weren't handled properly. I assume that there's a, they've been reported to DEP, Valerie had indicated they were going to be reused, which I've never heard of contaminated soils being reused and put back again. So I think the board should be made aware of that. I'm certainly concerned about it. I also noticed when I was there that, I don't know whether they're, you know, 204 and 207 Lowell Street is doing the work, but there's also, you know, like a pipe in the ground, and you can see where water's taken out of the pipe, and it looks like it's part of the town of Wilmington's infrastructure. I'm not really sure whether it is or isn't. I'm also concerned about the water that's being used down there, maybe to keep the dust piles, you know, the dust down from the piles, and whether or not that's Wilmington water or if it's, you know, their own water or where that water's coming from. I also sent a photo of this pipe that's in the ground with the hose coming out of it, and there's a hydrant there, and it looks like there's, you know, some maybe ductile water pipes that are going to be installed. So I'm just concerned about this project and that everything is going the way that it should go. There's a lot of construction going out there. We know from past doing fire reviews that there has been contamination out there and contaminated soils doing fire reviews years ago. So I asked that the, that the board address that. Also, I would also suggest that the route of the trucks be part of the permit, you know, instead of just somebody saying that, you know, they're going to be taking one route when they could go right down Woburn Street, and that would be unfortunate for that neighborhood. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff, based on this feedback, there's a lot to take in there. This is the first I'm hearing about the pile, and I understand we're talking about this particular project being at 203 Lowell Street, and that the addresses that were just commented on are outside, but it is, you know, adjacent to it. So if we can follow up with Valerie and Paul and whoever to determine what's going on with that?
Right. So Paul Looney is here. Paul, do you have any knowledge of this, these piles, or?
I was copied on the email that Suzanne had sent, that she sent to Valerie, or maybe Valerie copied the email response, more appropriate, that I hadn't followed up on that, that you have joint property. You can certainly look into it with Valerie and Cameron, who owns the conservation unit.
So just to be clear, this 204 and 207 is a separate project, separate property from what is before the board this evening?
That's correct. So as Suzanne mentioned, there's a lot of activity in that note of town with texture on redevelopment, texture on selling parcels to national development, and there's also work in the DEP parking lot, which is 205 and 207 Lowell Street. So those are separate than 203 Lowell Street, where the bank, the office building, and 50-unit residential building, so yeah, they're separate parcels. There's just a lot of activity going on in that, and they're all seem to be at the same phase of construction, right? Earth clearing, earth removals, stockpile material.
So from an educational standpoint, for the benefit of the board, understanding that you're all very busy, and you, as you just, you know, readily stated that there's quite a bit of work happening in that note of town, how is the town monitoring what is going on in each of these parcels? Is there a clerk of the work? So who is making sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that piles are being handled correctly, and water infrastructure is being handled correctly, and to some of the quality assurances that Ms. Sullivan is looking for? How are we ensuring that we're in good standing with what's, what's going on relative to permits that we've issued with terms and in conditions?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for now the departments, right? I can speak for my vision. We get called by the contractor to, for specific inspections, is what we look at. We do site observations on what's being installed underground, that we can report then back at the end of the project, when they're going for their certificate of completion, or obviously the permit that, yes, in fact, these stone water basin underground was installed, the drainage pipes were installed, things like that. We also look at if sewer is part of the project, will sewer installation, or the water installation to, to different division of Public Works, but there's different disciplines in that as well. So like you will have one staff that will be looking at the water system installation, and then we'll have another inspection to do on the base for the pavement section and make sure the paving is...
Thank you for that. So there was a concern expressed regarding water, and I know Jamie McGoldy's here, who's our head of DPW, not to spot you, but since we're trying to be thorough in a, in a complete fashion in the hearing, are you aware of anything relative to the water pipe that is being stated by Ms. Sullivan with a concern?
Not at this time. I was also copied on a series of emails, but not specifically that instance rings a bell. We do have a water inspector in the Water Division that would be called out to do inspection for the actual water utility, but we have not had any reports that there's been anything unusual up at that site.
Is it something based on the comments tonight that we could agree to take a look in to see what's happening potentially regarding that?
Yes, we can definitely take a look at that. I know Valerie isn't here, so I'd want her to have a chance to speak on.
Sure. Understood. Just more getting after the fact that the whole collective town team will take a look at it and come up with a practical approach as to how to, you know, look at some of these concerns. Would that be reasonable?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan, is there anything? The last piece was the truck route request that you had made. So Paul, back to you with the conditions, and obviously being respectful of the applicant being here tonight for 203, so I apologize that we're kind of talking around you, but it's, we're trying to conduct the town's business and take resident concerns, you know, up as they come. Is it, is it, is it practice that if a truck route is requested, that you would look at something like that to have that as part of the conditions, and would it be acceptable to potentially amend this to have a truck route, or is that something that's typically not done?
So number five of the recommendations there, I do have a hauling route for construction vehicles and equipment. It's just that it's anticipated to be Lowell Street to Route 93. As the applicant mentioned, though, that there, that's the main, that sounds to me like it's the main haul route, and certainly the most efficient way to get to 93 and to Wyndham, or wherever their other sites were. But they also are distributing to other, to a landscaper that's selling it locally as well. So it's a difficult thing to enforce if you just kind of think about the, like, logistically, how you would handle something like that, and we, we don't really have the staff to follow trucks out of the development to, I guess, regulate that to that degree, right? But I did write it as a condition. It's just that what the anticipated haul route is from the applicant, so it's memorialized there.
So to you as the applicant, obviously Paul brings up some, some good points, and you've heard the concerns of the residents. Is it something that Procopio is a good faith gesture and a partner with the town, having a project in town, that you could be mindful of using that specific truck route?
Absolutely, yeah.
At all costs and have deviation from that be the exception and not the rule?
Yes. Like I said, we have a pretty good relationship with the landscaping company, and I would imagine if I requested that of them, that they would follow that, so.
Okay. Yes.
Just for reference, on Woburn Street, from Lowell to, we'll do Eames, there was a truck exclusion sign down there, but they had to take it down. The neighbors in that area complained quite a bit since I've been on the board, to me, on heavy truck travel. I would, I would appreciate it, and I know the residents would, if you could keep it down to the most minimum as possible. They've had issues down there before, and they've, with all the industry down past Eames, it hasn't become an issue yet, but it's something that could. I know there's one company that is building down there that's already agreed to have none of their trucks go up Woburn from Eames.
Eames, okay.
They'll go up Woburns to Eames, and then they'll make their turns, but they will not go in the residential area.
Okay.
I think the residents would appreciate it even more. We're putting a burden on them with the construction up in that area, and all the dust and everything else. I know it's a small ask, but I think it would benefit your company, number one, the town, and the residents, seeing that something is done without them having to scream, yell, and holler to get something done.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else in the audience like to make a comment? Saying none? At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Madam Chair, before you close the hearing, I just wanted to address a couple of the items that came up about different work activities. So there are a number of conditions, as I noted here, 14 in particular, but one of the conditions, as Paul noted, is the truck route. Another is the hours of hauling on ways used by the public shall be limited to Monday through Friday inclusive, not earlier than 7:00 AM, not later than 3:30 PM. Also, if rock crushing operations are to be used on site, they will be limited to the hours of operation between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. In our normal weekdays, only rock crushing operations are not allowed on weekends or holidays.
Thank you. Did you have something else? Yes.
Related, and it was brought up a couple of times, about dust coming from the piles. I noticed, and this isn't where you're working, but it's where the other national warehouse is working. They have major piles over there, and they're uncovered. And I know I mentioned it to the town manager at one time, and I don't know what our policy is about that, but I've heard complaints of the, when they've had, you know, the breakdown of the buildings and the, and stone and everything else, and I noticed that everything's uncovered, and I don't know why.
Going back to our previous question about our oversight, so when, with respect to erosion control inspections, particularly with private development, the permitee, the applicants, are required to get a construction general permit through the EPA to monitor their own site. However, the town will also, if we see something like that or start, or we get a phone call or complaint in about either erosion, sediment control, that's not being handled property, properly, we'll, we'll also address it directly with the contractor or the developer. So what we can do this week, Selectmen Kyra is speak to the, I'll have engineering inspector speak to the site contractor about...
Yeah, I know a lot of those mounds are since gone, the way...
About dust control.
Looking, which is, and then to get back to what Ms. Sullivan said regarding 204, 207, now this is 203, right?
Yes.
And there was some contamination that she noticed in 204 and 207. So I guess logic in my mind is that it travels and probably onto 203.
Okay.
So is that, how is that handled? I mean, I get a little nervous when you're telling me that, that soil's going to be reused.
Okay.
And is it, is it contaminated? Do you know? I mean, should we be moving that right now until we find these issues out?
I don't have, I don't have an answer. I don't have that information, other than I was given direction to proceed with, with the work that I have. So as Paul stated, we've been following all of the, the EPA guidelines and performing the, the periodic inspections as necessary on all the erosion controls. We've, we've hydro seeded one large pile on site that will eventually grow grass and prevent dust from being spread off that pile. We also have a sprinkler system set up to, to handle the dust in the other areas of the site. Contamination of the soil, I don't, I don't have an answer on, on that. I'd be curious to know how it was, if you were able to tell it was contaminated.
That's a great question.
Paul, are you aware of the, the soiling that was being discussed by Ms. Sullivan in terms of it being deemed contaminated?
I am not.
Okay. So again, I know you're doing the earth removal for your specific address, and again, we continue to talk around the peripheral. It is relevant to the overall concern for the town, but, you know, that's something from a process standpoint, you know, is it mandatory for a parcel to be developed that an environmental testing is done? You know, is that, is that a condition that has to be done with any, any earth removal? I mean, is that not required?
I think it'd be a question for Procopio Companies, like the owner of the site, whether or not they do their own Phase 1, or site assessment, right, by a licensed site professional?
Right.
And it's, like, I know there's, just from my own experiences in private development before I started here, there's financial reasons, right? When you're working with banks, you get those types of things done, so I don't know if the applicant would be best to answer that question, I think, for this time.
It would certainly be something that was done above me before I was well involved. I would have to ask the question at, at my office.
But I mean, in terms of an earth removal, it's not a requirement to do a 21E in order to get an earth removal permit?
No, no, no.
So from a, you know, we've done land purchases from the town, we've done 21E to make sure we're getting clean soils before we buy a town-owned piece of land. But just for the record, it's not a requirement for an earth removal permit to check the soils before moving them as a means to move them off-site?
Yeah, this would be the responsibility of the landowner. They own the minerals on the site.
Correct.
Not the, not the town.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may, I wonder if we could table the conversation and for a later date. I think it's important that we discuss this, but if we just get back to the earth removal for the site, but I do think we should further discuss it, and maybe whether it be, I don't know, a conversation that we have about that whole property going forward.
Correct. I was only bringing it up because Selectmen Kyra had expressed concern. If it was contamination there, how do we know 203 isn't subject to contamination? So I just wanted to get it out there that it's not necessarily required for us to approve it, that we have proof of non-contaminated soil.
So it sounds like at this point, we, we don't necessarily have any indication that 203 has any contamination on the site, but if there is contaminated soil at 204 and 207, I guess, you know, is it possible that some of that soil has migrated into 203? And is that, it would seem to me, I recognize this may delay things, but it may be advisable to conduct some kind of an evaluation to confirm that 203 hasn't been impacted by whatever exists on 204 and 207? And I, and I, I think it would... And I, I think it would be incumbent upon the proponent here to, you know, whenever that evaluation was done, if it was some time ago, again, depending on how long ago, maybe that has to be revisited.
For the purposes of the export permit, though, can, I mean, how is that going to affect what we're talking about here tonight?
I don't know, Paul, if you can address this or not, but I guess the question I would have is, is the material that is proposed to be transported, if, and I don't physically know where that material sets relative to the 204 and 207, but if it's close enough in proximity and there's a question as to whether there's been a migration of that material into the material that would be transported, then I would have some concern about that, authorizing that until we have some confirmation that there is no cross-contamination, if you will.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a question to be asked back to the applicant to, if the board wishes to demonstrate that that soil isn't contaminated. I guess that's, that would be.
And through the chair, and I don't mean to cut you out, and if it is contaminated, how it's going to be removed so that when the trucks are driving down the road, it's not letting out?
The dust, yeah.
Well, the dust and the soil itself.
Right, right.
So Madam Chair, one suggestion here would be to continue this hearing perhaps until the 26th of September, your next meeting, and then in the interim, if there's an ability for the proponent to check on the issues that have been raised and, you know, have the conversation with the engineering department and just confirm whether or not there is any contamination that has migrated into this, into the 203 site and specifically the soil that's proposed to be removed. And if there is, then, you know, obviously we'll have to understand what the game plan is to deal with that.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Sorry. Is it normal procedure when there's construction for the soil to be tested before it's hauled out? Is that, I don't know if Paul knows that, it's probably a Valerie question, but is that standard procedure for the construction folks to test any soil that's been brought out? Or is that a town issue?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Just wasn't sure if that was a regulation.
Unless there's a known.
Right, right.
Right, I mean, of course, then.
Yeah.
So that's what I was just asking moments ago, based on the comments that we hear. And it's an unfortunate circumstance because it's the peripheral properties that are known, based on what I'm hearing, to have contaminated soil. There's two sides to this, you know. Unfortunately, we have an applicant that's sitting here that there's no proof that there's contamination there and is now being halted, which is an unfortunate thing. But at the same time, as a board, we're the author, you know, authorizing authority to grant the transporting of it, and now that it's publicly known that there could be an awareness, this is the first I'm hearing that there's a contaminated pile in the town that's been sitting there. That's disappointing.
Yeah, for sure.
That we're kind of making these decisions right from this table right now and I didn't even know about this.
Yeah.
So we're kind of navigating through this with cameras rolling and people here. But, you know, we also have a responsibility that if there's concern environmentally, we shouldn't just be, you know, going through the motions and approving things if we need to ask more effective questions and get more empirical evidence. If there was a 21E, there's a document that should be filed that states, you know, what the results of that are. And I understand from the private world, you know, people do those things, don't do those things, it may impact the value of the land, and I don't want to unnecessarily stigmatize this parcel in assert that it's contaminated because it very well may not be. And I think we have to be really careful about speaking of it that way because there are people that have invested a lot of time and a lot of money into a project that we shouldn't go down the road assuming that it's contaminated. But at the same time, we have an obligation to confirm what we know and don't know about the land, if that makes sense. So I would go back to the applicant and say with this delay, is this something that Procopio can work with the town to unfortunately absorb a small delay?
Would we have to delay all the way until the 26th and have a full another public hearing?
Correct.
Or if I was able to provide you with whatever sort of direct documentation is needed within a few days, maybe, I mean, would we be able to revisit this at that time? Or am I stuck waiting until the 26th, which would be unfortunate, considering we're, like we've just said, it's not my property?
Correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes, just one second.
If I may, just through you, to the gentleman from the town, was anybody from the town able to confirm, you know, with due respect to the resident who brought the concern forward, was anybody able to confirm these suggestions of contamination from the town side? Is anybody from the town?
No, we, no one from Public Works. I can't speak for Planning and Conservation, but not from Public Works. I can tell you, Madam Chair, that traditionally, the earth removal permit, and when I first started, it was a two-meeting process. You know, we, so, you know, and say for the sake of efficiency, of course, you always like to kind of get things wrapped up in one meeting, but I think it's a fair question to have the applicant address. And how they address it is up to them, up to the applicant, but if there is some information that maybe they could provide that could set everyone's mind at ease, I think it makes a lot of sense. It's my two cents.
Thank you. So there really isn't any real instrument to, you know, to approve it subject to the review of that information? We as a body will not be able to meet and confer outside of having another public meeting, which would be the next meeting. So I don't see any plausible way to work through this to do it before our next meeting without violating the open meeting law.
Yeah, I think the only way you could do it is if you were to essentially condition your approval on the premise that the town, through the engineering department, Planning and Conservation, were able to confirm through documentation provided by the proponent that the material wasn't contaminated. You know, that's a call the board would have to make as to whether you want to delegate that, so to speak, or whether you want the proponent to come back and with, you know, our engineering folks and confirm.
Sure. I'll turn it back here. I know you had some comments, but I'd also be looking for some direction from members of the board, how you feel about tabling it to the next meeting versus having a conditional approval.
Just have one point of clarification on that. I'm sorry, Mr. DePommier. And forgive me because I may be naive to this, but would 13 days be enough time to take a sample soil and find out?
That question, yeah.
I don't want to operate.
It may have already been done, that's the thing.
Thank you.
It may have already been done and we just don't have the report.
The question I have, Madam Chair, is, we're talking about 203.
Correct.
And the piles of what looks like could be contaminated soil are really on 204, 207. I feel that what we should do is get the engineers in from 204, 207, 204 and 207, to let them talk a little about it. I mean, it's the, if the material is contaminated, it's sitting on their property, not this gentleman's property that he's representing. And if we're going to tie them up a little longer, I believe that we should get, we should get them in here and ask them what's going on with those piles. I mean, if they're contaminated, they're contaminated, but we should know about it. Maybe if we knew about it ahead of time, if that is the case, then we wouldn't be having this issue now. I would ask that they come in at our next meeting to discuss the situation. And I would like to see some form of agreement reached that they do a soil sample and notify our departments, and we give them the conditional okay to do it now, and then they come in. If they come in with issues, then it'll automatically be a stop. That's what I would look at. I mean, how long can, you know, we're tying these people up now when it's not even on their property? Granted, and I understand how soil, you know, materials can travel underground, but, you know, are we, and I apologize if the wording's wrong, punishing them for something that's on another property? I would assume that if they're, if it is, if these are contaminated and they find that it has gone into their property, that there's going to be litigation of some sort between the two property owners. But I look at it that, let's get 204, 207 in, let's give, this gentleman is conditional with a, an agreement that he'll present soil samples to our department and then let them move on and get 204, 207 in. Ask them why they haven't notified the town, or is that contaminated soil? Thank you.
Thank you.
For the chair.
Yes.
As you've stated, the earth removal, there's no condition regarding if it's contaminated or not contaminated.
Correct.
And as Mr. Aluni also alluded to as well, so my concern is, if it were to be, how it's going to be removed appropriately?
Right, me too.
You know, I kind of grapple with it a little bit, but I would think that the owners of the property would not jeopardize anybody in building a bank and building office and retail and housing to say that they're going to build directly on contaminated soil. I would have to think that it's appropriate for that type of construction to go on that piece of property. So you would, again, think that it's not contaminated. But, so allowing them the removal based upon the fact that it's, there's no condition, conditional requirements, they probably should move forward with the removal. But I would like to see if, in fact, there were some contamination, that the trucks going out are, you know, removing the soil appropriately.
It's my understanding that the majority of those big, larger piles on the neighboring properties are the result of the demolition of the buildings that were once there, that they crushed up, and maybe not necessarily from any sort of soil excavation. So I guess my ultimate question would come back to, you know, how are we determining that these are in fact contaminated soils? I would, without speaking out of turn, that I would have to imagine that my company investing the amount of money that they have, with the knowledge that they are going to own and operate the property for five to 10 years, that they have done that due diligence. Unfortunately, we are where we are. I can do my best to try to dig that up, but it's unfortunate that, you know, something that's not on my property is.
Right. Understood. So what would be a reasonable condition that we could put in place to get some of the, any sort of environmental documentation that they have or that, you know, any sort of requirement that we would be requiring them to do? I mean, you know, we're in essence going to be saddling, you know, a company that doesn't have any proof that they have contamination to potentially spend money to give us proof based on what's perceived around them. But I think that's a little bit of an overreach, and I'm not sure that any principal member of a company is just going to agree to that, if it's not a requirement for an earth removal. I'm not saying throw caution to the wind, but, you know, we're potentially layering conditions on an applicant with no proof that there's a problem. So I'm betwixt and between, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, not take any sort of public concern seriously, but I am concerned about overreaching and conditioning a party, you know, beyond the scope that's usual and customary because of some perceived, you know, indication of contamination of which I have no proof and no expertise to quite frankly assess if there is or isn't. It's beyond my scope of talent. Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you. I would make the suggestion, I guess, to help narrow down the scope a little bit for the applicant, perhaps?
Correct.
If there's been an accusation of contamination, which is a big word and it's been said many, many times today.
Too many times, right.
There's all sorts of contamination, but I have yet to hear what the actual accusation of contamination type is. And this way, if it was an accusation of, for instance, lead in the soil, at least they could sample for just lead, and it would really narrow down the amount of time that would be required to satisfy any of the residents that are questioning that. And an opportunity to talk to maybe the Planning and Conservation Office, because Ms. Gingrich's name was used quite frequently as well. At least that would kind of narrow down the playing field. Just to do a broad scope test for any and all contamination, I think, might be a little bit difficult for somebody to do within two weeks.
Correct. And quite frankly, I'm concerned with us choosing what that condition should be without talking to the professionals of what it should be, but it's marrying the fact that the applicant would like to walk out of here with a permit, so we're kind of grappling with coming up with a reasonable condition. And quite frankly, we usually get the recommendations from the talented professionals such as yourselves that are trained to do this as to what those conditions should be. Do you follow what I'm saying? So I would be fine to table it to err on the side of caution, but it's going to delay the earth removal for two weeks. If we were to provide it with some sort of a condition, we obviously don't want to make the wrong condition, and conversely, you know, in addition, rather, if we approve it subject to those conditions and the earth removal were to start, and then we find out there's a problem, well, the horse has kind of already left the barn, stuff's already being trucked out. So what's a reasonable approach, having taken in all those factors?
I guess my only other question is, Ms. Sullivan, if you said it appeared contaminated, I'm just curious, what about it appeared?
So just, just while I was sitting. Yeah, I was frantically trying to look up to see if there's anything on Mass D E P, you know, because if there's a release, you're supposed to report it to Mass D E P. So I just looked up, there is one release tracking number for 175 Lowell Street. I don't know how 175 is associated with this, and I have absolutely no idea if those two piles of soil are from 175 Lowell Street or from somewhere else. And on 175 Lowell Street, it says that is petroleum-based contamination in the soil. So, but it does, that's all the information I can get, and it's from the end of June. I think it was, I think I just read June 28th, 2022. So I don't know how 175 is located to this. I have no idea, and I'm not trying to be difficult or even to cause problems for the applicant in front of you tonight. I would suggest that maybe, you know, just ask the applicant for, you know, a clear, clean bill of health on the soils and make sure that the ones, I don't know if 175 is anywhere near 203. I have no idea, so hold on.
Madam Chair, if I could make a suggestion, I think we should move forward. I personally think we should approve this earth removal because I think we don't have any information on 204 and 207. I think it's fair if we maybe want to go back to the builder and ask them if they've done that. I do think we should definitely reach out to Valerie and have a discussion on 204 and 207 so we know what we're dealing with there, but I'm prepared to move ahead and have them start with their removal. I think this is, he's being, they're being a victim of circumstance at this point.
Correct.
We have no concrete evidence, and I'm not disputing that, Suzanne, at all. I just think we definitely need to look into it and see what those piles are, where they came from. Do they come from 175? But I think at this point, we should move forward. I would recommend approving this removal and then getting together, as Jamie suggested, with Valerie and Procopio and whoever's the builder, I'm sorry, of 204, 207, and see what we have going on there. Because if it's been suggested, obviously, we should definitely look into it. But I'm prepared to move forward with this.
So in the past, when we've had, we've done conditional approvals subject to, whether it's a second evaluation by the Planning and Conservation Director to approve the project, what would be reasonable? We've done this before, where we've said it's subject to, you know, an additional review. I don't, I think to Jamie's point, you know, we would need to be really specific. You can do environmental testing from soup to nuts and spend thousands of dollars unnecessarily, but, you know, I don't want to understate it or overstate it.
Yeah, I would imagine that when the property was purchased by Procopio, they must have had an LSP or someone conduct some kind of evaluation. an L S P or someone, uh, conduct some kind of, um, evaluation. Uh, and I don't know when that was, but, um, to the extent that that evaluation exists, um, perhaps that could be, uh, provided to, uh, to, to the town through, to, um, um, Planning and Conservation or Engineering to establish, you know, what due diligence was done on this site.
So would anyone like to make a motion with a condition for the approval?
What actual condition are we going to be putting on this? Just notification?
So again, I, I would suggest that, that, um, Procopio be, uh, required to provide uh, documentation of, uh, whatever site assessment, uh, in Paul or, uh, uh, Jamie or Joe jump in here. I probably don't have the right technical terms, but essentially, uh, an evaluation to establish that the, um, soils, uh, and the site conditions, there were no, um, contaminants identified on the site of two oh three.
And through the chair, and again, it, even if there is contaminant, uh, it doesn't prevent them from removing the soil.
Correct.
So, eh, all my point is, is that it be removed appropriately. You know, so I mean, I, I don't know that we should necessarily stop, uh, the earth removal, uh, because it's, it's not in our purview to say, you know, it's, it's contaminated, so you can't build on that. We, I, I mean, we don't want to excite the public to say that there's going to be buildings on contaminated soil, right? We want to make sure that those, those facilities are going to be rented and utilized and, and the whole bit.
Right.
I, I think it, it should be to the point that we want to make sure if there is any contamination, how it's going to be trucked out of there, so that it's not, uh, left on the street.
Madam Chair, just one quick question.
Uh, to the applicant, sir?
Mm-hmm.
When your trucks leave your facility, your property there, are they covered?
Uh.
Oh, you can, you can mandate them be covered?
Yes, most delivery, uh, trucking covers that we have will have a cover that they can drape, you know, over the, the bed of the, the dump truck or trailer, whatever it may be.
That would be something I'd like to see is that the, you know, any, any truck coming out of there is covered.
Okay.
That's all.
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe you could just put a condition which is, goes beyond saying, is just to, that the, that the applicant has to make sure that the laws are followed if they come across any contaminated soil. I mean, there's laws that, that govern the removal of contaminated soils. And maybe just to put a condition in there, maybe it should be a condition the board should think about for all earth removal and just say that they have to make sure that they follow the, the applicable laws for the removal of contaminated soils if they do come across it and be done with it. I would suggest that.
Okay. Yes.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead Suzanne.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, this application as presented by the applicant.
Wait a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we want to put that condition that it be removed in accordance with state and federal laws if there's contamination?
I think that, I think that that would happen without saying, right?
I think that goes without saying, I would say, yeah.
Okay, Bushman Maine, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion to close.
At this point, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Bushman Maine, do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next appointment is with Michael Shampoo, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and Thomas Sterling, Principal for Sterling Brand Works, regarding the Town Branding and Marketing Project. Good evening.
Good evening. All right. So I'm going to be painfully brief here. Um, nice to see you all, um, friends and former colleagues. Uh, as you, well, some of you know, uh, the Economic Development Committee has been meeting and working together for the better part of three and a half years now. Uh, much of that time unfortunately was during the COVID pandemic. And so a lot of our work at that time kind of pivoted more towards communication to the business community, uh, as to how to gain access to information for, uh, resources as well as the opening, reopening plan. Um, then in the, in the post-pandemic, uh, we, uh, were grateful to have an opportunity to apply for a grant to the state of Massachusetts. Uh, and that grant, uh, was specifically for, loosely worded, but allowed communities to access funds to, uh, to help the business community in that community, uh, the businesses and would be potential new businesses as well as existing businesses in that community pull themselves up out of the pandemic and look to the future. Uh, and so we accessed those funds and with those funds, uh, we targeted the, uh, the hiring of a, a branding agency, a marketing, branding, advertising agency to look at creating a brand identity for the town of Wilmington. Uh, really just a, a go-to-market messaging, uh, taglines. And on top of all of that taglines, really, uh, uh, an entire program, uh, if you will, a strategy for going to market as we go forward over the course of the next several years. Uh, and this is work that many communities have done around us, uh, and work that I've been wanting to have, uh, the town of Wilmington do for years. And finally, we have the resources, uh, to be able to hire this, this great agency. So we did go out, uh, for bid and, uh, received in, uh, several, uh, bids from local as well as some, uh, some not local, uh, agencies. The committee, uh, reviewed all of the proposals and the submissions and we were very grateful to, uh, to have one come in from the Sterling Agency in Winchester. Uh, so Tom is here, uh, with his, uh, colleague. Uh, where we are today is, uh, the culmination of a, a lot of work that they have done, uh, working with, uh, our committee. And then, by the way, I wanted to introduce Suzanne on my committee is here, Carol from the committee is here, myself, uh, uh, and Jane, who is representing, uh, the Planning Department and Valerie, uh, who sits on our committee as well. Um, so, uh, Tom and his team have done a number of interviews, they did some working groups and they really just tried to get a sense of who Wilmington is, so that they, with that knowledge and with that understanding, uh, then together, uh, reviewing a number of other documents and studies that we have done through the years, many of them, uh, you've, you've seen. Uh, they will build a marketing and a branding campaign on top of all of that. Tonight, they're going to introduce you to the foundation, the beginning, uh, of that whole campaign. But that whole campaign depends on this foundation, uh, that, that you're going to see this evening. So we really wanted to get your endorsement, your acceptance, more than your acceptance, your excited endorsement for, uh, a, a tagline, if you will, uh, that would be, end up being the foundation for a, a larger, uh, larger project. So without any further ado, um, they're going to do a better job of presenting than I do, uh, so I give you the, the team from Sterling.
Thank you, Mike. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, we're excited to present. I believe we have, I think we have a presentation in here. Is it set up?
Yep.
I also have this copy here. Do we know? Double-click on that? Here we go. Perfect. Um, so just to catch everybody up, and I know a few of you guys are familiar with this initiative, but obviously this, um, program really is, is designed, um, to help give the town and economic development a little bit of an identity and then also some training tools and some resources and some buzz for local businesses in the area. Um, and as Mike highlighted, obviously this is a, this is an initiative that should have some life associated with it. Ideally, um, you know, the goal with this campaign is to create assets and resources and materials that, uh, ultimately can be, uh, leveraged, kind of looking forward. And so, um, with that, you know, kind of a, at a high level, part of the reason the Economic Development Committee went through this effort really was to kind of work through and address and, 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 um, address, I think, what has been an issue around attracting the right kind of businesses and attracting new businesses as well as creating that overall identity. I know we talked earlier and I've heard, uh, this reference many times, this concept around nodes. Wilmington has these fantastic nodes, a great diverse population of mom-and-pop businesses as well as national businesses. Um, we want to help those businesses. We want to help those businesses and we want to drive economic development throughout the greater community. And the focus of this campaign really more than anything is, is to create a refreshed public perception, a, a new introduction, almost an opportunity for those in surrounding communities and potential businesses, um, with giving Wilmington a fresh look as well as provide resources and tools for some of these, uh, local businesses. Um, and so if we continue to, obviously, I just highlighted those priorities, I think first and foremost is really uncovering this rich identity. I'm, I'm caught by obviously these great shots of the Middlesex Canal, um, and, and all the great history that brought us to today. But in so many ways, this campaign is about looking forward and setting that bold imperative for a community-wide thing. We're in front of you, obviously, because you guys are all, uh, and, and we would want you to be, uh, advocates for this, uh, as it goes to market. Um, because it's going to take grassroots supports across the entire broader community here. Uh, stakeholders in the existing business community, long-term residents, uh, and new prospective residents, new prospective businesses. Um, sort of seize on that priority too, really that sense of community pride. This is a, a, a community that has a Fourth of July celebration that is, uh, hard to rival in the, in the greater area and lots of other community organizations that come together and do that kind of work day in and day out. And so that's a big part of it. Um, and priority three really is visibility, visibility, um, throughout. So as we look, uh, forward and as we think about a tagline for this initiative, um, for those of us that do branding every day, we look at this stuff, uh, this is all just visual messaging. We haven't necessarily paired this, but ultimately this campaign is going to have some video production, it's going to have some other assets that will bring this concept to life. So today, all we're looking at is really just messaging, uh, words on a slide. Uh, but the goal is to get feedback today and to move the ball forward and the next, uh, next, you'll start to see this stuff kind of come to light. So the, the concept that we, uh, are here to talk through is this concept of Wilmington on tap. And when we think about this concept, I'm going to come back to this slide in one sec, and when we think about on tap, I want us to think about this concept freely available whenever needed. And when we talk about it, we have subsets to this concept around on tap. And this is a rotating positioning, which means there's a lot of, of, uh, of opportunity in terms of how this can be, uh, laid out and leveraged. But first one is innovation, next one is community, next one's open space, and the last one is opportunity. And when we play this all out, obviously Wilmington offers everything a small town should. However, some say has potential. I might even consider untapped potential, not, uh, highlighted here. Uh, on tap is a provocative, bold, unexpected, and gives us an opportunity to really pay forward what, um, you know, what I think, uh, is so special about this community. And I think first and foremost, when we think about innovation, we think about analog devices, Charles River Laboratories, uh, the list goes on. Uh, when we think about community, obviously I already highlighted the Fourth of July celebration, an active business community. Uh, you know, when we think about open space, we have a variety of great, uh, open space, uh, active and passive recreational opportunities for all ages. Uh, opportunity, there's definitely, and I know last time I, uh, got together with Economic Development Group, we talked about two seventy-eight Lowell Street, uh, there's a whole bunch of great projects that are happening, two oh three Lowell Street. There's a lot of, uh, you know, campuses, uh, that are active and thriving and there's, uh, space that is ripe for development. So, um, I think that really speaks to what really is a, a tremendous opportunity for, for local businesses. So obviously I said there's not going to be a lot of visuals here. This isn't truly, uh, anything that we've developed as part of the campaign, but I wanted to give you guys some visuals to kind of react to, um, as, as part of this. Um, so we can really get a little bit of a sense and a feel for what this would look like. But ultimately, this is really just the first of what will be a, a, a longer-term initiative working towards, uh, and, and building this all out. Um, so with that, I'm going to pause and open for, for questions and discussion.
Well, thank you very much. It's an excellent presentation. I enjoyed meeting you and your, uh, group with the committee. Um, Jeff and I had, had joined your last meeting.
Yes.
And I really appreciate the work of the Economic Development Committee. I know you've put a lot of time into this. Um, appreciate you being here. I'd like to turn it over to my fellow board members and to, to Jeff. I mean, anyone in the audience that might have any comments on this, even though it's not a public hearing, this is a community initiative. So certainly I would be entertaining anybody that would like to make a comment or ask a question. So, um, I've had an opportunity to talk with the group already. So would anyone here at the table like to provide some feedback, some thoughts, um, suggestions?
I'll start.
Sure.
Um, so thank you for coming. This is great. I mean, um, it's nice to see this finally coming to fruition. Are we sold on that tagline already or?
In terms of the discussions that we've had, and we've had quite a few, this is the one that has been the crowd favorite.
Okay.
Um, and I think there's a lot of energy behind it. But in our last discussion, we certainly kind of had an opportunity to, um, get feedback from a larger group.
Yeah.
And the Economic Development Committee, uh, also brought in members of this, of the greater community, even members of the business community to talk through it. Uh, we had a very productive dialogue about it.
I'm not a fan of it. I'm going to be honest with you.
That's fine.
Um, I mean, obviously to me, it, it reminds me of beer and I understand the tap, you know, with the hops and stuff, but I don't like it. I, just being honest, um, I love the, the whole concept and I think we need it. I'm excited about it. Not a fan of the tagline.
Why don't you talk through just a little further, outside of beer reference? Any other feedback?
Well, that's the first thing that comes to me. I just don't, it doesn't resonate with me, Wilmington on tap.
Okay.
Like Wilmington on point, like it just, I don't see, that doesn't say anything to me, I guess. You know what I mean? It's just Wilmington on tap, what does that mean? You know? I think a tagline for me shouldn't need explaining. Do you know what I mean? Like it just should excite me and that, and again, this is my personal, I don't, this is, I'm not, you know, putting, I know a lot of work goes into this, Suzanne, Mike, all of you guys, but I'm just saying I don't, it doesn't resonate with me. To me, I'm not feeling like what does, to me, I look at that and go, what does that mean? After the beer reference with the hops, I mean, as a Wilmington resident, resident, obviously I made that connection and I think that's cool. Um, I, I just, it doesn't speak to me. I don't understand, like, what does that mean? That's my question to you, like, what does that mean?
Well, do you feel like you guys have innovation here in Wilmington? With all the business campuses?
Yeah, yeah, our businesses are, are.
So innovation on tap, do you have a same reference or the same issue with?
I work at analog and I, devices, we would never use that term.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm not trying to be mean. I'm just saying, it just doesn't resonate with me.
You're not being mean.
I'm just giving you, and I hope I'm in the minority, you know, it's great. If this is what we go forward with, great. I totally support it. I just, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
So I'll stop now.
Uh, I have to agree with her. As soon as I heard on tap, I went, okay, where's the bar?
Yeah.
Where's the beer? We don't even have, we don't even have a, a brewer in town. Uh.
We're trying.
But, yes.
Are we trying? Because, I mean, this could be that provocative statement that in so many ways welcomes certain types of businesses.
I would, I would encourage that we have so many phenomenal businesses in town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, cutting-edge businesses, not just analog, uh, not just Charles River.
Yeah, no.
There's a lot of smaller ones out there that we should be, we should be advertising and supporting strongly so that people can see. Well, what's Wilmington got to offer? Oh, wow, they got them there. They got them there. And it's like anything else. Most people, or at least I do, I'll, I'll see a corporation name, have no idea what it is at all. And there I am on Google, uh, looking up to see what it is. I go, wow, I didn't know we had that in Wilmington. You know, the, the, there's just phenomenal businesses, uh, and, uh, to set it up as on tap, I don't know. I, it doesn't excite me. My personal opinion is, and I don't know how to go about it, I'm not in the business, but I would like to see something opened up and slap you in the face and say, hey, pal, this is Wilmington. And we have it. Uh, the excitement of the town. Yes, the open space, uh, the, uh, culture we have in town, uh, the rich old homes, uh, you drive down Church Street and Church Street is very attractive. Beautiful old homes. And we should be encouraging that in town. We should be s- talking about it more. Uh, businesses. You, I mean, I didn't know some of the businesses that we have in town, that we have in town. And, uh, I would encourage more on, uh, your business communities, uh, the schools, uh, there is a lot in this town to like. And I, I personally believe we don't get enough of it out. town to like. And I personally believe we don't get enough of it out. Again, I hate to keep going back to it, but the businesses that are in this town, they're here for a reason. They're not here because we have the lowest tax rate for businesses in the state. They're here because of our location, because of what we can offer. And I, you know, I just, on tap doesn't, you know, all I think of is, okay, you know, I'll get the Uber ready already. But we don't, we don't have that. Well, if one thing that we don't have, and unfortunately, it's addressed differently, is we're a drive-thru community. That's all. Everyone tells me the same thing, oh, you live in Wilmington, that's the place. I drive through that. There's nothing there to attract me. And I personally don't like it. But then again, you drive down 38, and what do we have? What do we have? You know, whether it be restaurants, mom-and-pop restaurants, mom-and-pop little variety stores, knick-knack stores. That's how you're going to attract people to the community. And I personally don't think you're going to attract anybody to the town saying on tap, unless they're looking for a beer. And I hate to keep saying it, but that's all I keep thinking, on tap, beer.
Well, I appreciate the feedback. We certainly have sliced and diced and spent quite a bit of time surveying and talking to people about their feelings around untapped and you guys, or on tap, I'm sorry. You guys are not the only people that have provided that feedback. We did bring a second option for this group's discussion, although we strongly were advocating for the on tap positioning. But I'd be happy to share it if we have time.
Yeah, why don't we see if we have any comments here first and see before we go with the second option?
Well, now we've got to see the second option.
Any feedback on the, on the first one?
My turn?
Either.
No, not you. What did you get first?
You're on tap.
Can I go back to that last, on tap? Jeff, is that you there in the, under community?
What, on the opportunity?
Yeah.
Unity.
I was, it was either Jeff or Mike Shampoo.
Either one of them.
I thought you were asking if it was Jeff on the community.
Me too. Me too. That's what I thought you meant, too.
Because there's a, isn't there a picture out in the hallway of Michael Sam that everybody thought looked like Jeff?
Yeah. That's why I thought you were saying that.
But, no, I, I'm sorry. Laughing my own, laughing my own joke. That's all. No, I appreciate the, the presentation. On tap is, kind of grows on you a little bit, but that's the first thing I wrote down, beer. But it, you know, how did you come up with the, this concept? Did, was it just you and the committee doing it? Was it?
Well, we did quite a bit of initially phone interviews as well as meetings with the committee. And then we spent a lot of time thinking about, how do we address some of the feedback, some of the challenges that came out? You know, here's Wilmington, here are the things that are great about it, here are the things that are challenging about it, here are the things we'd love to change about it, here's the things we'd love to do to kind of move and create some new energy. Certainly, there's businesses that have been here a long time, there's great businesses that are here. And then there's other businesses that have considered Wilmington versus maybe another community, and they've made a decision to go somewhere else. You mentioned brewery already, right? How do we create a little bit of a, I don't want to say provocative, because I feel like it's overused, but some sort of a statement that creates a little bit of energy, kind of hooks you in and makes you say why. I understand in both of your cases, it was sort of dead on arrival. That was your first reaction.
Yeah.
But for other people we've surveyed, they've said, well, wait a minute, what do you mean? Maybe I just drive through. Why is Wilmington on tap? What is on tap? What do you mean? I need to know more. So I understand in some cases, if it's a plumbing supply company or something, that tagline better explain that you have plumbing, equipment and supplies. This is a little different. In this case, it's a campaign that's designed to create a little bit of energy, a little bit of the why. But again, it really, it's, you know, we want to understand from every perspective what the aggregate of the community is going to say, so we get the right action.
I think just, oh, go ahead, Kevin.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, every perspective.
Yeah.
Right? Have you talked to, or have you done a contest even with the kids in the schools, or even like analog devices, or Charles River, who you have a picture up there? Have you asked them what they think Wilmington is all about? What would they consider to be a branding or a logo type of thing? I live in a community, you know, that has so much to offer, you know? So maybe, maybe that's an opportunity for you to tap, the local businesses. They mentioned mom and pop.
Mm-hmm.
That, I know it may take a little bit longer, but it would be an opportunity for you to get a feel for what their thoughts are, what they're thinking, and maybe you'll get something out of it. It's great to hear from the young kids, that their minds are just open, and they come up with something and boom, there it is, you know? Or from businesses, like I mentioned, that, you know, that, that we have world-renowned businesses in Wilmington. They may have some thoughts and ideas as well. And did you have the opportunity? I would assume so, and I know Mike could, could answer this. I'm sure that the committee provided you with a video that was done, that I thought was spectacular about Wilmington. Did you see the video that?
I did, yeah. And I think one thing that we also want to be sensitive to is, Economic Development Committee was very clear. We've invested a lot of resources in plans. We've invested a lot of resources in surveys. We, as part of this, our focus is really to help make some decisions and help position the community. We could ask 100 people, we could ask 1,000 people, we could get some great insights, but we might end up with a lot of, like, we wouldn't necessarily achieve a consensus.
Right. I mean, you ask 1,000 people, you may get 1,000 answers.
Exactly.
Yeah. But it might give you a better feel for.
Yes.
For how you look at things, how you approach things.
Did you have any other feedback, though, on this? You said it grew on you, but where did you land?
Yeah. Yeah. I landed, I would say on the fence. Not a big fan at this point in time.
Okay.
I just want to add on that. I think, too, one of the issues for me is, and maybe it's because I'm older, I don't, like, on tap, I would never use that reference. I've never heard that reference. So to me, maybe that's why it doesn't resonate. Like, no one's ever said to me, like, that's on tap. Like, you know, the kids use, I don't know, like, that's fire, you know, when I'll say Wilmington's fire. But I'm just saying, like, I would have understood that. Like, on tap, I've never heard that term. So I think that's why part of it, like, doesn't resonate with me. So if it's a term, and maybe it's just me, but I've never heard that term used, like, I get it. I get what you're saying, like, you know, Wilmington's on point, on tap, whatever. But I think I can't be the only one in town that doesn't know what that means.
Well, I wouldn't say that it's like a member, a common piece of pop culture right now. By no means are we taking a reference and adapting it. I think it's, in some ways, a new, a new way that it's being leveraged.
So I'm going to just give one more member a chance to speak, Mr. Vandal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, thank you very much for this presentation. Good evening. Mr. Shampoo, it's always nice to see you back in room nine. I'm open to this, you know, as I'm listening to all this. I'm trying to keep an open mind, and certainly I'm trying to keep in perspective that this would be one small piece, as Mike mentioned, to a larger campaign. So you did, you did get me going when you mentioned that there was a second option. So I'm very interested in that, but I'm really trying to keep an open mind, and so I look forward to it. All right.
So I will say, you know, Mike, I know you want to speak too. When I went to the meeting, you know, my feedback was, right away, was the beer connotation. And I had concerns about public perception and the fact that, you know, even though hops is in the history, and you had had the Wilmington History Book, I mentioned that a lot of people probably haven't even read that book to know that hops is in the history of the town, which is, which is great. And then we didn't have a bylaw to even allow a brewery until just recently, you know, which was another issue that has been corrected. But to get back to it, I had concerns. I think, I think the tap piece with the revolving wording gave an opportunity to touch on innovation, community, open space, and opportunity. All the other taglines were like two words or three words, and it was done, where this kind of had that plug and play, if you will, that you could bring different aspects of the community and make it look like a more multifaceted community than just a business destination or just a community destination. And that was the only tagline that gave that flexibility to kind of wander with it a little bit for all the different aspects that Wilmington had to offer. When I went in, I was dead-set against it. But as the meeting evolved, I started to, to be a little bit more open-minded. And every single thing that you said was as if I had said it. And Suzanne was there, you know, and Mike was there, obviously, the other parties were here. And I, I'm going on a slippery slope, but I'm going to do it anyway, just for purposes of this conversation, is that there was a diverse mix of people at the table, gender-wise and age-wise. And you'd be surprised, as you went around the room, how the, the viewpoint and the sentiment of what it meant changed. And the younger people around the table loved it, because it spoke to the future and kind of where we're going with, like, what's on tap, innovation. And there were comments that, you know, the people that are here are here. It's how are we going to attract the people that haven't come here yet and bring in the new and bring in? So it was interesting how the perspective, and I sat there and I said, I'm going to be open-minded. And I walked out, not 100% sold on it, I gravitated towards some of the other taglines that were offered, because I saw four. You're only seeing one. I saw four.
Yeah.
So in fairness, I saw more information.
Yeah.
But I wasn't as turned off by it. I'm not 100% sold on it, but I warmed up to it before I left. That's all I can say.
And if I can just add to that, Madam Chair, it's just, that's a really good point, but the people who are going to see this are not going to be privy to that type of information.
I agree. I agree. Oh, 100%.
Yep.
Yeah. There's no, there's no right, there's no right, everyone entitled to their opinion, too, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's, it's hard, because you, you know, in the meeting with Jeff was there, and we both spoke that it was important that this board, you know, weigh in on this, because my comments that night was, were that, you know, there may be a need, there may be an ask, there may be a need for funding, that they're going to be looking for us to endorse. And I think it's really important, you know, not that we're necessarily speaking for the whole resident body and the finance committee, but that there should be some, some alignment with this board.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to put in my piece. And then Mike Shampoo, I know you were looking to speak, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for your feedback. I will tell you, when I first heard this, it was on a, just an audio call, a conference call. I was in my car driving home from Maine on vacation. And my knee-jerk reaction was, yeah, I like it, but it'll never fly. And so we had that conversation for all of the reasons that you've just described. And as I started thinking about it more, some of the recognition, some of the things that popped in my head and through the conversation with Tom and his team, some of these things really kind of started to switch me over. And then we had the conversation at our meeting. Here behind me are images, Tom already alluded to, of the Middlesex Canal, which is a proud part of Wilmington's history. And we know factually that on that Middlesex Canal, hops that were grown here in this town were moved from Wilmington into the city and eventually made their way into taverns and breweries, et cetera, et cetera. I always like to craft a story, and I don't have factual evidence of it, but I like to craft a story that hops from Wilmington were converted into ale that was served at the ale houses where Sam Adams and John Hancock and others planned the revolution, and thank God that they did. So again, it's a little bit of a fictionalized version of it. But still, to me, I think it's relevant that we were once known as the premier hop-growing community. The reason I bring that all up is because through interviews and through conversations, what became clear was that one thing that virtually everybody that was part of these conversations articulated was a great respect for our past, in all aspects of our past, our agrarian culture, our manufacturing past. Wilmington is a great place when you think about the years, the decades, the generations of people that have lived here, and the great many things that have happened in this community. On tap is a nod to our past, but we're not a slave to this idea of just celebrating our past. This notion is, let's nod to our past, acknowledge it and respect it, but let's blaze forward and talk about our innovation, and talk about these forward-thinking ideas. So it incorporates both. What I love about this tagline is its flexibility. Any other tagline that Judy saw four, and we are prepared here to show you another one, but this tagline gives us the ability, it's four taglines in one. You're getting more bang for your buck. And truly what I mean by that is, we can phase it, and I'm sure Tom could speak to this, but over the course of a year, over the course of a couple of years, we could schedule out a schematic of when certain messages are sort of dripped out into the community, both the community locally, but also the greater community. So that's the, I believe, the pragmatics of the, of the tagline. The more esoteric, I guess, benefit of it, in my view, is it is a little bit, I hate the word provocative, because it sounds like it's poking, but it is a little bit, right? I hate, I'm going to, this is dangerous. There's no such thing as bad press. We get people talking, right? I want people talking about Wilmington, even if that talking is, what do they mean on tap? Have a conversation. If they, if someone asks me, what do you mean by that? And I have an opportunity to tell them what I mean by on tap, it's getting them thinking, it's getting them talking, it's getting them understanding and aware of Wilmington above and beyond Burlington, I don't know what their tagline is. I can tell you, I've never heard it. North Reading, I love all our neighboring towns, by the way. I don't have anything negative to say about them. But I want those innovative, forward-thinking businesses to look at us and see us as innovative and forward-thinking as well. That was why I enthusiastically decided that this was the right direction for us to go. We can take a more conservative approach, certainly. And I, you know, I anticipated that perhaps there might be that desire to do that. I understand where you guys are, you know, you represent to the rest of the community. But I wanted to lean in on this one. And I actually asked Tom to come here tonight and help us lean in on this, because I believe there's merit to this. I really do. And so I understand every, every observation that you've made, and I had those same observations when I knee-jerked out of this. But after some thought, after some consideration and some review, I've come to really believe that this has, has some excitement for our future. Now, that being said, we can look at the other one, and it will be less, less exciting, but, you know, I want to, I just wanted to tell you what my perspective was. I think, is that, is that a reasonable?
Yeah, I would love to speak too.
Yeah.
I totally, I totally agree.
So I also had reservations when I first heard it, and I voiced them, and Judy had reservations. And then in like, probably like 15, 20 minutes, I started thinking about, like, these things started flashing through my head. Like, I could picture like a faucet on tap with like, the words coming out of it, opportunity, all these different things, like, the opportunity that we could have with this saying. And one of the things I really, really love about it is, one of the problems that we have in Wilmington is we have not tapped into our potential. And what I love about this is it gives us that opportunity to maybe tap into that potential. And that's why I really liked it. I, it is a little provocative, but you know what? We have a long road ahead of us, and being provocative may be something that we have to do. Get people start thinking, get people to start talking about the town. So I really liked it, for all the reasons that Mike said, for all the reasons that Judy, Judy said. I, I think it's bold, and, but I think that you can address just the connotation for, you know, beer or alcohol, because there's so many other things you tap into. You don't just tap into liquor, you tap into a lot of things. And one of the things I think of is potential. And so I really like it. I hope, I hope we can, we can sway your position. Thank you.
Where the chair? On that regard about potential, that could be a, an item up there as well, right? The fifth item, potential?
I don't like it.
I mean, it's growing on me. As I said, I was one of the.
I love the concept. I still don't like it.
One of the younger guys in that room.
So we sort of give the manager an opportunity to offer some comments as well.
So I think the one thing that perhaps everyone can agree on is that it is, I guess, as Suzanne said, bold. I think it gets your attention, depending upon your perspective, for perhaps positive and maybe less positive reasons. But I think there's value in having a message that's going to grab your attention. I, you know, when I first saw it, I mean, I have to say, one of the first things that popped into my head is, okay, it's on tap, that beer connotation, how is that going to play with, you know, quite frankly, how does that play with our whole substance abuse piece? And we're trying to encourage families and younger adults and all folks to be responsible. So there's obviously that piece of it. But I also think about it from the perspective of on tap means that there's something about Wilmington, perhaps, that is yet to be revealed. So what is it? We need to find We need to find out, let's come here and see what that is. So it's kind of almost like a mystique that the message is conveying, that, okay, we gotta check this place out and see what it reveals. So, you know, I guess, similarly, I suppose, to the chair, I initially had some mixed feelings, but I think came around to the idea, and also in part because of the other subtopics that were identified.
Can I? Yes.
So I'm still not sold on this. I think one thing that we're all, myself included, even though, you know, is, we know Wilmington, we are Wilmington, we're excited about when we want to produce it, you have to look at this like somebody who does not know Wilmington. Someone who does not know, I don't know that that's gonna grab people, I think people might be like, Wilmington on tap, what's that, and move on. I don't find it, I don't find it bold, I don't find it provocative, I just, it makes no sense to me. It just, I get the whole tap, maybe you do tap into Wilmington, as opposed Wilmington on tap, that would make more sense to me, for example. And again, this is just my personal opinion, to me, this is not a grab, and you gotta remember, this is going out to people, like, everything Suzanne, Mike, everything you said, totally agree with you, it makes sense when you say it, it does. But you have, this is gonna be to people who do not know about Wilmington, and I just don't see that being a tagline that draws me in.
So just to give you some context, for those people that would be receiving whatever we land on, whether it's this or another version, it might be a social piece that they're engaging with, that's a video, that has a voiceover, that has a script, and that builds and explains whatever that is, all the way through to whatever the positioning is it's presented. So it, I understand, all we have today to show you is words, and we have some visuals that give a little bit of context, but it's hard to see around the corner about what that ultimately will be. So I understand and respect that we're not totally seeing to its content, but part of the reason I think people are attracted to this is that magical quality of, it needs a little bit more definition, and there's more that will be there to support it, so.
I don't see it that way, but I appreciate your explanation.
Whichever direction you go.
I'm sorry, I'm being difficult, but just be honest.
And to be honest with you, we were all aware of the concerns and all of the potential connotations that we've talked about, and this team around this has had so much energy around this concept, so much discussion around it, that they wanted to bring it forward, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I too haven't been sold on it, but I look at this and I see innovation in community, open space, opportunity. How about something too where, yesterday, today, and tomorrow, showing what Wilmington was, what it is, and what we're envisioning for the next generation, so to speak. Again, I go back to, I look at, I look at these companies that are in town, and there is just unbelievable potential there, but we, it seems like we hide it all the time. You know, it's one thing to, you know, like I said, mom and pop businesses, you know, all kinds of businesses, knickknack shops, restaurants, to entice people to not use Wilmington just as a drive-thru. But that's what most people do, they say, eh, Buzzright down 38, you know, Burlington, I can cut through on 62, no problem there, well, why don't you stop in? Where? Wilmington's got nothing to offer, it's because they don't know it. So you have to show them, again, not just yesterday, today, but you gotta show them, you gotta show them today, but you gotta show them tomorrow, too. And you gotta see with Charles Labs, River Labs, and all the companies that are up there, these aren't, these are not your average, everyday businesses, these are not just nationally, but worldwide known, and highly respected, and they're sitting in our community, and we don't know about them. I, you know, but on tap, it's just something there that just doesn't excite me. It's, again, I know we've all joked about it, on tap, where's the beer? But that's what you're gonna get, you're gonna get people going, Wilmington on tap, you know, okay, where is that beer?
So if I could just interject, I don't wanna be limiting, you know, people's words and comments, but just out of respect for the agenda and the amount of time, and I wanna make sure that you get due consideration in terms of your fair equitable share of the agenda. So perhaps we can move to the next part of it.
Yep, absolutely.
Just so we can take it to the next level.
Right.
Before you go on, Madam Chair, just, and I know I'm not supposed to have my cellphone on, but every once in a while, you have it on, Concerns of Family and whatnot, but someone just texted me, a 30-year-old that says, I love Wilmington on tap, but that's from a 30-year-old, so.
Back to them.
No, 29, I'm sorry.
Great.
29 in holding.
Yeah, 29 in holding.
Yeah.
That's tomorrow. All right, next option, opportunity awaits. Now, this is probably one that's not necessarily gonna have as a tougher reaction, right? We're really looking at what is forward, when we think about future, when we think about all of these positive outlooks that we talk about, you know, projects that are being permitting, other things that are happening. When we talk about opportunity awaits, unless Sherbubs of Wilmington, opportunity awaits, you, your business, or your family, we're a proud community with a rich history, we celebrate that there's room to grow physically and economically. For families, the community offers rich opportunities, looking to establish roots, and a deeper connection with the neighborhood. Wilmington provides for businesses, an engaged community and town leadership that makes every effort to be approachable when it comes to zoning, planning, business establishment-related matters. Come to Wilmington, opportunity awaits. Now, in this case, for this, we probably would pull forward some aspirational shots of like, where we wanna see economic development, and that would be a part and parcel with how we would present this type of campaign messaging and strategy. So with that.
Is the bar?
Any initial reaction from the board on opportunity awaits?
I thought it was boring, I'm sorry.
That's why we're here, is the feedback.
I'm reading it.
I think it's better, I think it speaks more to business than it does to, to, you know, people moving here, which I think is probably the number one thing, you know, with this, I mean, obviously we want people to live here too, but, you know, getting more economic, you know, businesses, development, and.
So I know this is your meeting, but I'm just gonna put it out there, would you be willing to share the other two that were not part of the two that are here?
I mean, I think I could, I don't know if that's gonna get us closer to a consensus, but I absolutely can do that.
I'm only bringing it up based on the feedback that you're getting.
Did we wanna get any feedback on this from the rest of the group before we?
I've, you have.
I just wanna thank you, Madam Chair, I like that opportunity awaits, I mean, I think about the opportunity that I've been afforded, having grown up here, and I think it's a great opportunity for people who are moving in to live here, and so that kind of speaks to me, I know we're talking about businesses.
Yep.
But I think, you know, it'd be a great opportunity for a, for a business to capitalize on what's been mentioned by my colleagues, that we are a, somewhat of a cut-through community, so this one kinda, I seem to gravitate to this one a little bit more than the first one, but.
Agree.
That's just my initial reaction, since we're talking.
I do think, just to throw this out for the greater conversation here, I know there's been a lot of energy around this concept of a rotating positioning, or a rotating tagline, it is not, it does not, we're not precluded from community awaits, et cetera. If we come back to these key words here, if ultimately this group felt strongly that this concept of on tap was, was not, was a non-starter, it doesn't preclude us from considering the same kind of approach from opportunity awaits.
Yes, you just maybe think, you know, I do like, like I said, the opportunity awaits, because then, you know, then you could do like, innovation awaits, community awaits, open space awaits, you know? That flows to me more better, more better, that's not proper English, that flows better to me, than, you know, because that, that makes sense, like, that resonates with me, because then you could flow those four categories through that tagline, for example, so.
Absolutely. And we did, as part of our discussion, with every single person we interviewed, whether they were members of the business community or otherwise, what's the story, how did you get to Wilmington? What were you considering, what other neighborhoods were you considering, what other towns were you considering? So I do think it's important that we consider the potential resident, the potential business, the current resident, the current business, and I do think that while maybe the messaging as we're seeing it now, just in the words, it's hard to see how maybe it would work, we could still think about, how does it apply, how does opportunity awaits fit in for a young family, what youth sports are available, what other things are commensurate with that, right?
I think that one, you get a plethora of things you could do with that tagline, I, in my opinion.
Madam Chair, the other thing is that, I would, if that's one of the options, I would remove the word opportunity as a fourth.
Yes.
And put what was said earlier, potential, potential awaits.
Potential, yeah, that's a good one.
You know, it's opportunity awaits, innovation, community, open space.
The only problem we had with potential when we dug into it is, potential seems as though you have to take an action to take advantage of it. Opportunity is already there for you. That was the only, in our small focus groups, that we discussed internally in our team, where potential was a tough one, we're like, well, potential, all right, but potential could be, I'm sitting on the couch today, but, whoop, but there's so much potential right in front of me, where some of these words we want to have a little bit of an action to, but I, I'm just sharing that.
Should I share what the 29-year-old said on this one? Opportunity awaits is overdone, it doesn't sound original.
It's also, feels a lot safer, but.
It's a safe word, yeah, but I.
And awaits for how long? But anyone's gonna have connotations to these words, at the end of the day, we're just looking at words, there's so much that rounds it all out, and I know we're just looking at the very tip of a much larger conversation, but.
So to bring it together, Michael and team here, you're looking for some consensus from the board, is that a must-have tonight, because it's kind of a first look for us, and some board members may wanna mull it over a little bit, and kind of dive into it a little bit, or are you looking for us to give you?
I will say, for my purposes, yeah, we're looking to charge forward, we had invited you and Mr. Hall to our last committee meeting, hoping, and listen, we're in uncharted territory, so there's no precedent here for developing a brand line, and so we came to the conclusion during that meeting, you know what, this needs to come before the whole board, obviously, if we're gonna potentially create an identity for the town, you folks as the elected officials need to be part of the deciding on what that identity is. So that's why we're here. If it was possible to get a vote on one of these tonight, that would be good for me. I defer to Tom and his team as to the timelines, we don't have them forever, and here we are in September, there's no deadline specifically from the state as to how much time he can dedicate, it's really a financial thing, but this is supposed to come to fruition, and we're to present our final package to the state as evidence of us, you know, sort of using this funding, sometime late fall. So, you know, it takes time for them to develop content on top of the foundation that we're presenting here tonight. So I ask that question over to you, Tom, you know, that I think the next time you guys meet, it would be two weeks from now.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think broad public support for this initiative is what's most important to us, so if it made sense to reconvene as a group in two weeks, we could certainly do that, I would just, we would just wanna know, like, from this group, what we would like to see, in terms of where we wanna go to get there, because, you know, ultimately, it's a very important initiative, we don't wanna reverse course and revisit this messaging later on.
No, just wanted to, because there's part of me that feels that some people may not need two weeks to render a decision they've already made up their mind, so I don't wanna elongate timelines and kind of deliberate things and make things overcomplicated, but I do know that typically, we've had first reads, and we've had first views, and not, you know, we've had some feedback amongst board members to be put in a position to make a decision in a one-meeting type scenario, it doesn't work for everybody, so is anyone have, does anyone have an opinion as to coming to a consensus, doesn't mean we all have to agree, but, you know. What's the pleasure of the board?
I think we just share our thoughts, I mean, it's just giving them our opinions, it's not like we're voting.
So I would go right down the line, one or two?
So you know how I feel, if you change, if you switched it around and said, tap into Wilmington, I'd be okay with it, I do not like Wilmington on tap, I just don't like it, it has, I'm gonna say this, and it's probably really inappropriate, but I'm gonna say it anyway, we have a detox center here, I know that, I just, that's another reason I just think, I've been holding back on saying that, I think it just, but whatever, I just don't like it. I would vote for the opportunity awaits, might be boring or whatever, but I just, I just think it works better, that's my feeling on it.
I can't support it right now, I can support the concept, and I see things in here that I think if they go the right way, it would be something that would be exciting for the I find that a lot of times, people look at the past more than they should, the past, history is history, we should always present it, but after the history, we have to get more bare bones into what's happening today, and what we're looking at for tomorrow. And again, we go back to these companies that we have in town, that are so innovative, on the cusp of some great things. I think we should push hard for those, I think we should also push our location to Boston.
So Slakman-Kyra, would you be comfortable with one or two, or neither?
Neither.
So neither, okay.
I'm okay with two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You know, I know the, sort of the buck stops here, right, because we're elected to make decisions, but I still would like to see what the public thinks, even if you offered all four options, for them to vote, which one do you like? You know, and if they chose number four instead of number one, certainly doesn't mean that we don't go with number one.
So if they chose, if they chose number one.
I mean, this is a, I see this more of a public decision, right, a citizen's decision, a resident's decision, not just five people. And I understand that you make recommendations, and this is your recommendation, and we're supposed to make a decision based on your recommendation, but it would have been interesting to see what the public thought before we made that decision, but if we're to make a decision tonight, I think I would go with number two, opportunity awaits, but I would really like to see what others think.
So I'm going to go with two as well. I do really like one for a lot of reasons, but I'm taking a conservative approach, I do think Slakman-Kyra's point about getting more community feedback, you know, this is just one body's opinion, I agree with the comments that it's a community decision, I know you've done a lot of work to try and get a true sample size of people giving information, you know, but if I had to make a decision tonight, I would say two. So based on that fact, you have four on the board that have given two, one non-endorsement at this time, and then one did not prevail. I didn't know, Jeff, if you wanna give any sort of feedback as the manager as well, certainly this isn't just exclusive to the board. You've been in leadership for, you know, over 30 years here, so, you know, you should have.
I, I think the, I mean, opportunity awaits is certainly not bad, I guess I still tend to prefer on tap, I think it, there's a, you know, notwithstanding some of the comments that already have been made, I think there's a certain, it catches your attention perhaps a bit more.
So the, Madam Chair, the Economic Development Committee's looking for us to take a formal vote tonight, should we be doing that?
Do we require a formal vote? It's not a board considered item, I think it's more just a litmus test to know where we're sitting. You know, the other thing is, if you went back and developed a third, I mean, nothing says that the discovery and discussions for your committee, you know, needs to end with just this, you might decide based on this feedback, that you're not really enchanted with number two, and might wanna go back to the drawing board, you know, nothing says, you know, I'm not trying to make work, but nothing holds you to that, you know, if you wanted to plug and play with it a little bit more.
I will defer to Mike, and that might be.
Carol, she's passing notes and clips, no, I don't know. I think one of, another suggestion was made already, suggestion potentially, yeah, to change the on tap to tap into. was made already. Suggestion potentially, yeah, to change the on tap to tap into in the next round, or so tap into our innovation. I think that was all, that was similar.
I said, yeah.
And it's a good, yeah, it's, I think, you know, that's still, if that's a compromise that gets the same advantages of having the multiple levels and the multiple communications, the multiple messages, as well as the nod to sort of our agricultural past, I'm certainly receptive to it, if that's something that you guys are. Tom has indicated that his team can, can go into sort of, not pause, but not necessarily start tomorrow to develop an entire campaign based on your vote tonight. So we can potentially come back here in two weeks with a refined message?
I think we should.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that would be actually really cool if you did. And the reason why is, I'm not waffling from what I said about two, but if you could just indulge me a minute, is that Wilmington on tap says we already have something that is special now, and we're just going to make it better. And we're, we're turning that tap on that Wilmington already has and gives the innovation community, et cetera. The opportunity awaits or innovation awaits gives me the mindset that we don't have it now and we're waiting for it to come. It almost puts us down. So I'm not loving two. I'm picking two because if I had to pick between the two of them, I'm going with the safer option. But, you know, innovation awaits, community awaits, open space awaits, opportunity awaits, makes it imply that it's in the future and we're striving just to get that.
That's a good point.
We already have it. We already have so much amazing stuff, so many amazing things that are going on now. It makes it seem like we're trying to seek that out because we don't have it.
Yes.
So I'm struggling with that.
That's why Wilmington's on tap.
That's what I'm saying. We already have it. We just need to pour it out. We need to pour it out.
I think you switch it to tap into Wilmington, because then you can do tap into innovation, tap into community. That's why.
The only problem with tap into that we ran into in our initial discussions was it takes an action. On tap, it's already here. It's available. Again, I understand the reference in some cases is dead on arrival. That's the only difference. And again, it's small word changes, but we could certainly chat as a team.
Don't want to sell ourselves short, like we don't have anything to offer right now because we do. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I just, you know, if you're listening and I'm on the committee, one of the things is that I think we're trying to.
If you can just state your name, sorry, I apologize.
Carol.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to create a, look at a, lack of a better word, pizzazz. And I think you all kind of agree that on tap has the pizzazz. And I fully understand, because I have the same sentiments about the negative connotations of it. But I think, you know, we still need, rather than you all just kind of default, you know, when your hearts are not really in, that to me would be unfortunate. I'd rather see, you know, just we try to maintain the pizzazz, but maybe take out.
No, that we try to maintain the pizzazz, but maybe take out the, what you feel is a negative connotation of alcohol or whatever, and revisit this rather than just settle. I feel like you, we're going to settle, and I think you feel the same way.
I do. I think it's excellent advice. Excellent. So, so with that being said, I think that, you know, you've heard the feedback. I think that your willingness to come back would be appreciated because we don't want to just settle that. I feel like that would, you know, be a non-productive use of your time and the committee's time to just settle on the safety because of the choices.
I think the ideal outcome would be that you guys are all ambassadors to this when it lands. And I think we would absolutely be, would welcome the opportunity to come back before this group.
Okay, great. That'd be great.
Thank you.
I want to just address you up because I, I was there once. I know I like to have the information ahead of the meeting. We purposefully didn't give the information ahead of the meeting. We didn't want, we wanted the great reveal tonight. So, you know, I know that it would have been, you know, if you had had the opportunity on Friday to get this in your packet and think about it over the weekend and have a conversation, maybe call me or whatever, maybe you would have formed an opinion here today. But I think we would have lost some of the aha moment of the presentation. So.
I agree.
It's not good form under normal circumstances for me to surprise you with something, but it was intentional tonight. I just wanted to put that on the.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Yeah, we can leave you. Yeah, we do have copies.
Okay, sure. If you want to leave it with Bev, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you so much. So, as we're turning the room over, just wanted to acknowledge Jamie McGoldy, Public Works Director, and Joseph Lebeau, our Public Works Deputy Director, regarding the update on the boil water order. Jamie and Joe are going to be the next two appointments. That's gentlemen, good evening. I want to apologize for the delay. Also, too, I know Kristin Koster has been waiting patiently as well. So I apologize for the delay. So we are going to turn it over to you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening. Here tonight, Jamie McGoldy, for those at home that don't know me, I'm the Public Works Director for Wilmington, here with Deputy Director of Public Works, Joe Lebeau. And we're here to discuss the water quality update and the events that led up to last week, September 8th, and the boil water order. We've, Joe and I are, and the rest of the team are, have had along five days. We worked very hard on this, and I find I'm very proud of the way we've handled things. It was an unexpected challenge, but we continue to work on it. And I'd just like to summarize what we've done. Okay, so just right off the bat, a little summary about water quality testing. So, drinking water is heavily regulated. Testing a drinking water is governed by, on U.S. EPA, Environmental Protection Agency on the federal level, and also the Mass Department of Environmental Protection on the state level. Safe Drinking Water Act was enacted in the 1970s, and it establishes a list of potential contaminants that towns must test for, as well as the frequency of testing. So I just wanted to lay the groundwork. Drinking water quality, very, very heavily regulated, as you know. And, but there is the Mass DEP that we work closely with that kind of calls the shots on actions that we have to take when we run into finding contamination. One of the categories of contaminants that are tested for are microorganisms. Wilmington collects approximately 33 samples per month from specified locations across the distribution system. And I wanted to just talk about the difference right off the bat between total coliform and E. coli. Now, total coliform is a naturally occurring bacteria, sometimes found in soil and plant materials. It's not entirely unusual to find that in the water, although it's rare, but not entirely unusual. It can be an indicator of E. coli, but not always. So sometimes you can have total coliform, which is a larger series of bacteria. When the lab finds it, they automatically test for E. coli, which is a subset of total coliform. So often, you can have total coliform and no E. coli, and I want you to just keep that in mind. E. coli is obviously a subset of coliform, and it can, that's the bacteria that can potentially be harmful. It's also the bacteria that would trip a water boil order. Just talking about the general timeline, last Tuesday, September 6th, a routine sample was taken at the Hillside Way Water Tower, Water Tank. That sample was analyzed overnight, and on Wednesday, September 7th, a result was found positive for total coliform, but negative for E. coli. Protocols from Mass DEP dictate that when we find a positive for total coliform, that site is re-sampled, as well as upstream and downstream of that site. So we resampled overnight, and Sept- September 8th, on Thursday, that's the big day, we found positive total coliform and positive E. coli hit in only one sample. That was the upstream sample only. I will go into greater detail on what we did on the events of September 8th to get through this day. But just generally speaking, we issued a preemptive boil advisement. We isolated the Hillside Way Water Tank from the rest of the distribution system, and Mass DEP issued an official boil order. That's important. At the same time, in order to lift a boil order, the state requires you to have two rounds of clean samples. So that day, we sampled round one, the tank, again, upstream, and then downstream. The next day, Friday, September 9th, the result came back. The system, the distribution system, that is, again, that's been isolated from the tank, was negative for total coliform, negative for E. coli. The tank itself has had a positive total coliform hit again, but negative for E. coli. So what that means is that we passed round one with our distribution system having a clean bill of health. Again, the tank had a positive total coliform, but it was isolated. We resampled again for round two. The results Saturday morning, September 10th, came back entirely clean. The system, the distribution system, had a negative total coliform, and the tank itself actually had a negative total coliform. So what we were seeing is almost an every other day positive of total coliform on the Hillside Way Tank itself. We reported this to Mass DEP, and because our isolated distribution system had a clean bill of health, for two rounds of resampling, they lifted the boil order. Again, the Hillside Way Tank is still isolated. We resampled that to try to get a second round of clean from the tank. And on Sunday morning, we got another positive hit of total coliform. So, again, back and forth. And what we found was, it's just tripping the threshold for total coliform. So that's probably why one day it was positive, one day it was negative. So, Thursday, September 8th, taking a closer look at that day, what we did. The DPW was notified by the MWRA lab that we had a positive E. coli hit. We spent a little bit of time that morning fat gathering internally and confirming the results. We then had a conference call between the DPW, MWRA, and Mass DEP. At that call, they advised us to have a team meeting with town stakeholders. And Mass DEP at that point advised us that a boil order would be forthcoming because we did have that positive E. coli hit on that upstream sample. But they were very clear that it was not official until we received it in writing. We then had that meeting with town officials in the MWRA to talk about a plan of attack. We discussed the logistics of preparing the boil order. At that time, the schools proactively pulled cold foods prepared with cold water out of the lunchrooms. And they talked about the logistics of ordering a mass amount of bottled water for the students in the event the boil order were to go into next week or this week. And at that time, we figured it was in the town's best interest to issue a preemptive water boil advisory while we were waiting for Mass DEP to issue their order. Again, they told us it was coming, but they have a little bit of paperwork to do on their end before they officially release it. So we thought that was in the best interest of the town, issue an advisement. And so that's what we did. We sent out a boil advisory. Notifications were sent out, again, for an unofficial boil order. We sent out an Everbridge reverse 9-1 to the townwide system. That went out to any contact that signed up for Everbridge with a cell phone or a home phone number. We updated the DPW website. The second one there should say DPW Twitter. We also updated the town's website and the town's Twitter system for social media, and also the town's Facebook. We then sent messages to WCTV and the Wilmington Apple. Again, like I said before, we isolated the Hillside Way Tank. At the same time, Mr. Lebeau talked to the MWRA. They sent out a drone to inspect our Hillside Way Tank in the event that they saw any sort of external infiltration of the tank, some sort of hole or a crack in the tank that might have been leaching in water or any sort of contamination. Incidentally, that inspection turned out very clean. The tank looks great. At the same time, the schools decided to cancel Friday, September 9th. And like I said before, a lot of boiled, bottled water was ordered. And that was canceled basically for concerns due to hand washing, having enough water for the kids, and what to do with lunches. So it just kind of bought them a little bit more time to prepare in the event that the boil order were to go into next week. Truly a collective collaborative effort between town departments. The Health Department at this point started notifying restaurants and healthcare facilities and nursing homes. And keep in mind, this was all during the advisory. The actual boil order from the state has not come out yet. So around 2:00 PM, we received the actual boil order from the state. And then we did it all over again. We sent out another Everbridge. So that's why people got two calls. We updated the website again. We updated all of our social media. And at this point, it's hard to do anything in town without people talking the way social media's been. So word spread pretty quickly. At the same time, we displayed a boil water order on our electronic signboard at Rotary Park, people driving by. And by now, CBS News, Fox 25 News, they copied our town press release from our website and put that on the evening news. So, what's next? We're going to turn this over to Joe at this point, and he can talk to you about what we're continuing to do.
Thank you. Good evening. As Jamie has mentioned, we really have been working at this nonstop since we were first informed of this situation. So what are the next steps? And what we've done along the way, we've been coordinating with a tank vendor who specializes in not only inspections of tanks, but also the disinfecting of tanks. So just today, we've reached out to a vendor and we've received approval for them to move forward. We received approval from DEP this morning to move forward with the disinfecting and the inspection of the tank for this Wednesday. So that's the next step. Certainly an expedited process that, it's taken a lot of effort, but that is the first, the next best step to take, right? Because we certainly, although there's no E. coli, as Jamie mentioned, in the tank, there is total coliform, and we're seeing it up and down, up and down. So we need to address that immediately and identify where the potential problem is and how do you solve that issue. Throughout the process, as Jamie mentioned, we've been dealing with the DEP and also the MWRA, and that will continue. And once all parties agree on what the next step would be after we receive two positive, or two, I guess, favorable results for total coliform, then the MWRA, the DEP, and the town decides when that tank goes back online. So next steps, Wednesday, we'll have a specialized vendor in town to do an inspection and also complete the disinfection. And once we receive two clean sample sites in a row, that's when we look forward to bringing this Hillside Way Tank back into the system. And that's really where we stand as of now. Just, again, this is a coordinated effort from not only the town, but also the MWRA and the DEP, who ultimately is the driving authoritative force, I guess, in these incidents. That's really where we stand as of now.
So at this point, would entertain any questions that you might have. I'm sure you have a few.
I would just like to start just by offering my thanks to both of you for being here, and also just to thank you and your team and everyone at Town Hall for the dedicated effort that went into bringing this all together and coming up with an action plan. Obviously, the two of you had a very integral role and a very lead role in all of this, and I appreciate being included in that as the Chair of the Board and with Jeff. I know that you've had several calls. We've been talking morning, noon, and night throughout the whole time period, and I've participated in the majority of the calls. The School Department should also be commended, as well as George Hooper's staff, and I'm sure Shelley Newhouse, and I'm sure I'm missing other key players that have been instrumental in getting this out to the community. I already received messaging just before coming in here from you, Jamie, again, as the leader, to do a debriefing on how things went. And that just speaks to your work ethic and that of your team and with Joe, to see that if there are enhancements and things that we can do better moving forward, that we're always being mindful of that and not just resting on our successes of trying to address something, but making sure that we, we learn from it. So, I know the story is still being written and that you will be updating the public. Can you share in terms of, from a testing perspective, I know Shelley had put out some FAQs, and there had been some things. At this point right now, people are able to drink the water. Everything is business as usual. We isolated that area. I had received some questions about, do I need to flush out my system? Is it, you know, how often do we test, which you've spoken to? Where can we, can, can the public see the test results that are generated? Can you answer some of those public questions that we're getting?
Sure. So, we actually asked the drinking water chief for the Northeast Region of Mass DEP during one of the meetings if we were to advise people to, to flush out their lines. It wasn't entirely a bad idea, but she did advise us to not go on, in ruckus in saying that. What they were concerned about was a mass flushing all at once, which sometimes tends to stir up sedimentation, sediment in the pipes, and it might have had a reverse effect. We didn't want to stir up any turbidity in the pipes. So, given our circumstances and the fact that we cleaned a couple of different clean rounds were received back, at this point, we weren't concerned at all that there was lingering E. coli in the system. Keep in mind, it was a boil order. It was not a do not use order. So as people were still using their water, showering, cooking, and boiling the water, the system was still moving for two straight days. So that was one of the main reasons.
In terms of test results and things from a public perspective, to educate the public, if they wanted to see about water quality testing for their given community, what should they be, where should they be looking for that information?
So Joe's done a great job over the last couple of years when he worked for the water division of maintaining our DPW website, Water and Sewer Division, and the annual computer, Consumer Confidence Reports, the water quality reports are all posted. They're done on a yearly basis. And so anyone that wants to look at our water quality system for the last 10-plus years can see that on our. last 10-plus years can see that on our website. This information will clearly be included in a summary that will be posted on our website at the end of the year. And I'll turn it over to Joe in a second. But it goes without saying, anyone that has any questions about what happened or what we continue to do can feel free to call the DPW and talk to either one of us.
Okay.
Yeah, not really a ton to add to that. Jamie really hit it on the head. This whole process is being transparent, right? So certainly, any questions that arise on what we sampled for and what the results are, they're available. If there's something specific that someone's looking for, they can, of course, reach out to the DPW. Those records would be available.
Thank you very much. The other question I have, and then I'll turn it over to my fellow board members. I know we're speaking specifically about Wilmington, and that's what's in our purview. But I'm seeing on the news that other communities are getting hits as well. Is there something environmental, I don't want to put you on the spot and have, you know, you say anything that you're not comfortable saying, but is this common for this time of year? Is it because of the change in the weather patterns, or is it really too difficult to call?
I mean, again, I can't speak specifically to each individual case, but in general, in the warmer weather months, that's when your chlorine residual, which is an indicator of certain things like this, the heat has a tendency to degrade the residual. And if you think of a tank, for instance, where most, consider that your weakest part of your distribution system, generally, if there's a problem with water quality, the first place you look would be a water storage tank. Because as you would imagine, it's sitting out in the sun, and it's getting heated up day after day after day, especially during this summer, as you know, with the warm weather that we've had. So I think, again, generally speaking, that seems to be the common denominator, if you look around, what's different this year compared to years past.
Understood. Thank you. So at this time, I'll open it up to board members. I'll start on my right. Anything here? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to compliment you and the manager for your attention on this and for keeping us informed since the very beginning. I know it's been a lot of effort from both of you. I appreciate that. And the same goes to you, gentlemen. I want to thank you both for your attention on this. And anybody who's seen you come before us before had the same level of confidence that I had in both of you, that this was under control from the very beginning. So I appreciate you, Shelley, George, and I have the utmost confidence in the work that you do. So thank you for all your efforts and your team, who you are constantly giving praise to. I know it was a lot of work for our people in your department over the last couple of days. And I appreciate your transparency and for being here tonight to kind of give us a recap of what happened and what's up next. And again, we really are very fortunate to have people like you working on our behalf when things like this do happen. So thank you again.
I echo my colleagues. And thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of the residents and where the chair, town manager, Shelley, the whole group that came together and reacted immediately to the situation. Just a couple of questions. How, again, how often do you test? Is it once a week?
Yeah. So this falls under what's called the total coliform rule, where you, if you looked at the town on a map, so to speak, you would have representative sample sites spread throughout the town. So when you do conduct these samples, you're getting a piece of the pie of every area of town. So for this particular total coliform rule, we do 33 samples a month. We do it every, it's basically weekly. So you split it up into quarters, where we do one quarter, week one, one quarter, week two, and so on, until you do all, you know, 33 or so samples.
And you do that?
Year-round.
Every month? Yeah. This isn't just a
No, absolutely not.
... that you did it because of this.
This total coliform rule, this is the base fundamental test that all public water systems do. This is water sampling 101, right? It's not just in Massachusetts. This is a federal program. And all public water systems do it, and it does not stop.
Right. You know, I'm asking because the public has been asking and
Of course.
... want to reassure them that you're doing that.
Fortunately, you don't know about it until something like this happens. But this, quite frankly, is the reason for the testing, is to identify a possible problem ahead of time, proactively, instead of having to react after the fact where it possibly might have been widespread. That is the whole point of this.
And you mentioned that you isolated the tank up on Hillside Way, and now you're going to get someone to come in and clean it and sanitize it. What happens to the water that's in the tank now? Does that get flushed out? And then they clean the tank?
Nope. So they have an application where they can actually truck in a chlorine solution and then pump it from the bottom of the tank, the exterior of the tank, up to the top, where there's that opening called the hatch. And they will disperse the solution into the water storage tank from up above. In theory, the water settles for a day or two. We do have a mixing device in that tank, which helps to, you know, move the water, to avoid stagnant possible. So as the water mixes, and then it stabilizes, then you do a follow-up test within maybe a day, maybe two days. We need to see where we stand at that point. And then, as we mentioned, you need two straight days of clean water before the DEP will entertain even bringing that back online. So depending on, you know, the scenario, it will be test one, then test two over a couple-day period.
And this water in the tank and in that area, is that MWRA water?
No, not necessarily. It's typical of the system. It's a blend, right? The MWRA does not, their line actually enters into our system where it blends with our water, right? So it's not like the MWRA just feeds one pipe. It feeds our town, and then eventually it disperses as it blends.
Yeah.
It's a combination.
Yeah. And I'm only asking because I didn't know, did you check with MWRA if they're having that, this issue and the problem on their end, and it came into our, you know, water source?
They are not. They are not. Yeah, we've had countless conversations with the MWRA throughout this, and yeah, they aren't having that issue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything up here?
Yeah. I just want to thank you guys as well and the whole, your staff, your team, everybody involved. I, too, as Mr. Bendel said, I felt very confident that you guys had this under control. I wasn't too worried. And I do want to say, just in my private life and my daily job, I was dealing with this all weekend, too, on that end, from another state. But the communication between, you know, that we're getting from the town with Shelley and my, you know, colleagues at work, it just, it really went smoothly. And I would like to share that a few people that were not involved in what we were doing on our campus today were commending us for a smooth job. But in reality, it's a kudos to you guys because we couldn't have done what we did without your work. So I just want to thank you. And I just want you to know that it was seen by many people outside of Wilmington as well, even though they work here. So kudos. Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone involved with it. I was speaking to Jamie a little earlier before the meeting. I was very impressed with the response. It's one thing to have an issue, but it's another thing when the response drags or there's lag time. You didn't, you jumped right on it. And I think the people of the town should be very happy. A lot of the questions that were asked that I was seeing on Facebook were answered. Even the big important one, that Wilmington's the only one that gets E. coli? Well, watch the news tonight. But no, I just want to compliment you, everyone involved, from the town manager to the chair, and to your staffs. Your staffs, if they didn't work properly, we'd still be in a situation. Congratulations. Hold your heads up high. You did Wilmington right. Thank you.
Any comments that they have?
I think it's all been said. Certainly, you know, it has been a long stretch here. I think Dee contacted me initially just after nine or thereabouts on Thursday, and between Jamie and Joe, and then with all the other folks that were involved in the communications, police and fire chiefs as well, our deputy police chief. Everyone, you know, was involved in Zoom sessions and obviously trying to figure out the best approach and trying to notify the public as soon as possible, recognizing that we couldn't make any official statements until DEP gave the order. But I think in the end, it made sense to at least put that advisory out, you know, to get, make people aware of it.
Thank you. Any other closing comments?
No, just thank you, everybody. Again, we still have a lot of work to do. It's not over. We want to get this tank cleaned up. But just as everybody else said, it was entirely a town effort. Every department, Board of Health, Public Buildings, Public Works, Public Safety, School Department, and everyone. So we're just representing the team.
So one thing, just in bringing that up, and I want to close on that, is from a financial perspective, do you have all the financing that you need to address the issue?
At this point, we believe we do. We do have a small expense related to cleaning the Hillside Way tank, but it was a lot cheaper than we expected and something that we can certainly cover, we think, in our operating budget.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else before we move along?
Nope. They've tapped into it. Good.
Okay. So moving on to the next appointment, which is also with Jamie McGoldy, Public Works Director, and Joseph Lebeau, Public Works Deputy Director, regarding the DEP waste ban update for mattresses, organics, and textiles.
Okay. Well, I guess I don't need to reintroduce myself. I'm still here. So shifting gears a little bit, we're going to talk about the Department of Environmental Protections' waste ban update for organics, textiles, and mattresses. So Mass DEP has issued their 2030 solid waste master plan. It does two things. It establishes a short-term goal to reduce disposal statewide by approximately 30% over the next decade. And it has a long-term goal of reducing trash by 90% by the year 2050, which is quite a tall order. But they're taking it in small strides, and they're focusing on that the next 10 years to try to reduce statewide disposal of trash. So DEP, starting November 1st, 2022, this fall, will be implementing the following three waste disposal restrictions. You'll see those check marks next to one and two, and then next to number three. I will summarize all of these. I will tell you that we are already in compliance with numbers one and two. So the first one is that they will be lowering the threshold ban on commercial organic or food waste to facilities generating more than a half-ton per week. That restriction is currently in place now. However, the threshold is one ton of organics and food per week. And I'll further explain that in a bit. Second restriction is that textiles will now be banned for disposal or transport in the state of Massachusetts. So what that means is that you will be forced to recycle textiles, similar to the current recycle bylaw, which requires you to recycle bottles and cans. And I'll go into that in a bit. And the third one, which we need to work on a little bit, is that mattresses will also be added to the list of banned materials from disposal or transport in the state of Massachusetts. Again, what that means is that mattresses will be required to be recycled rather than thrown away. So let's tackle number one first, organics. How does this affect Wilmington? Well, again, the current waste ban for commercial facilities, which includes our schools, is currently one ton of organic food per week. Starting November 1st, that'll be reduced to a half-ton per facility per week. We went ahead and calculated the anticipated weekly organic food tonnage at each of our eight Wilmington public schools. And as you know, the DPW is in charge of trash removal for residents, but also town buildings. So talking to the school department, we got an enrollment count. This is June data, but we will have updated data come October. But this does include the wild wood being closed and those students going to a different school. We calculated using conversion factors from the Mass DEP. And as you can see in the yellow column, we are less than a half-ton per week now. We're actually almost less than a quarter ton. So we're in pretty good shape. Again, the current law is one-ton-per-week restriction, going down to a half-ton per week. So currently, if we do nothing, we're still in compliance. If we weren't in compliance, what this would mean is that if you're generating more than a half-ton per week of organics or food, you would be required to put that organic material in a separate trash toter or dumpster at the schools. You would not be able to throw away that mass amount of organic material in the town's school dumpsters. It's coming, but it's not here yet. So again, all eight of our Wilmington public schools are currently under the allowable half-ton of organics per week. I talked about in subsequent years how Mass DEP plans to further lower the allowable threshold incrementally. And again, for the purposes of the November 1st implementation, it appears the updated restriction will not affect our school system. We're saying that private commercial entities and restaurants that do trip the half-ton-per-week restriction should make arrangements with their private trash haulers to find out how they're dealing with this regulation. The Board of Health is in charge of this, not the Public Works Department. We talked to Shelley Newhouse today. She has a link on her website. That is, we're beginning to alert people in restaurants of this restriction. One of the things that we plan to do through our social media campaign is to alert all residents of these three new restrictions. So that will be out in social media, and businesses alike will see that as well. So we do encourage businesses, sub-shops, the three major grocery stores, if they haven't already, to reach out to their trash haulers. Moving on to textiles. Real quick, textiles are defined as articles of clothing, footwear, bedding, towels, really anything with fiber or fabric in it, stuffed animals, for instance. Textiles currently make up at least 5% of the waste delivered to combustion facilities in Massachusetts. And just about 95% of this material could actually be recycled or reused instead of thrown away, which is why it's been included in the trash ban. Each of our eight Wilmington public schools currently has at least one of these textile bins that you'll see in the parking lot. Some of our schools have two. This is a program currently run by Bay State Textiles. We started it several years ago, about six years ago. And the program currently returns approximately 100 ton of textiles, $100 per ton, rather, of textiles back to the Wilmington public school system. Over the last six years, we've actually removed over 380 tons of textiles from the trash stream and generated close to $38,000 for the Wilmington school system. So this program is very successful. It's ongoing. And because of this, no immediate changes are anticipated to meet the November 1st deadline for textiles. Again, DPW will be increasing public awareness of the updated restrictions through our social media campaigns and encourage the use of our textile bins. We also have a pretty nifty search tool on our DPW website. So if you have an item that you're not quite sure how to throw away, you can search for it on our website, and it'll give you suggestions on how to do that. Instead of using the textile bins, you don't have to use them. We would just encourage you to donate gently worn clothing to your favorite charity or to a church. Savers is a good organization, also helps you. You can find anything online. But generally speaking, you will not be allowed to throw away a mass amount of textiles in your trash. I don't mean a dirty rag or something that's been soiled, or a towel that you use to change your oil, and it has material on it. Soiled textiles can still go in your trash. It's the clean, you know, you're cleaning out your closet, you have some clothing that doesn't fit or it's out of style. That's the amount of material that you would either want to donate to the textile bin or donate to a charity. Moving on to number three, again, this is the one that requires a little bit of work for us. Mattresses. The Mass DEP expanded disposal regulations will include a ban of mattresses and box springs due to their unique construction of intertwined metal and fabric material. According to DEP, almost 600,000 mattresses and box springs are thrown away annually in Massachusetts. Currently, our program actually sends them to the incinerator to be burned. What does this mean for Wilmington for mattresses? Again, we have a current program in place where mattresses are collected free of charge, similar to a bulk item, but they're free. And you would call our trash hauler, Casella, make an appointment, and they would come up and pick up the mattress for you. But they're transporting it to the incinerator plant, and that has to change. An average of 20 mattresses and box springs are collected currently weekly in Wilmington. And again, as the facilities will no longer be accepting clean mattresses after November 1st, Wilmington received a revised proposal from Casella Waste to arrange to have these items picked up by special residential collection. Casella's proposal includes mattresses to be stored in a resident, in a unit on our DPW yard until a container's full. At that point, it would be hauled away to a recycle facility. So real quick, this is the actual proposal from Casella in a nutshell. And it shows that they're charging us approximately $24 per mattress. And again, we're averaging roughly 20 mattresses and box springs per week. There's also a rental unit charge for the 40-yard container and a hauling fee when that container is full. And that's assuming that we're hauling it about once a month. Again, those numbers could change roughly, but our approximated annual cost would be about $33,000 a year for this program. We did seek other quotes from four other vendors that are listed on the state website for this work, and only one out of the four responded. That's Green Mattress. The cost to us from Green was $55 a mattress, which would be $57,000 annually, almost double. And town staff at the DPW would have to administer the collections. The truck would only collect when they had enough on the list to make a collection. So there's no guarantee that it would actually be a weekly pickup. We had a problem with that. If you had a mattress, you could potentially be waiting four or five weeks for a collection. We didn't think that was fair, especially to pay more money for it. So we do at this point So, we do, at this point, recommend moving forward with Casella's proposal to keep all the residential curbside trash recycling program together, and for the end user, the resident, there's very little difference right now. I mean, you have to call Casella to pick up a mattress as a bulk item to be transported to the incinerator anyway. The only difference is that you would call, and a recycle truck would pick it up to store it. So, the change to the resident is very minimal. However, what we're looking to advise here is that we consider charging a fee for mattress collection. Currently, to pick up a mattress in town, it's free. We would be looking or asking the board for consideration in supporting a $10 mattress fee for a mattress or a box spring. That fee is identical to what's currently being charged for a button pickup, I'm sorry, a white good pickup in town, or a CRT, a computer monitor, and what that would do is help pay for approximately 1/3 of the $33,000 annual fee for us. But more importantly, if we don't charge something, I fear that we will start inheriting mattresses from other communities. It's very important to try to have some control over this, because again, the more mattresses we collect, the higher our price is. So, we can certainly start here and take a look at it after a year, look at our numbers. We know we're averaging currently 20s and box springs per week. If $10 isn't enough, and we look, and all of a sudden, we're averaging 60 mattresses a week, we know that we have changed, and likely, there's been some import of mattresses. So, I would recommend, at this point, that we start with a $10, and it would be the same system we have now, where you would purchase the sticker at the treasurer collector's office, and instead of for a white good, it would just be for a mattress, you would then call Casella, make the appointment, and be put on the list. And that's really all I have tonight. This is just a couple screenshots of our DPW website. We have a trash and recycling page. If this is approved, all of this will be put on our website. We will also launch something likely tomorrow on our DPW Twitter page to start alerting the residents of these three changes, really, the main change would be the mattress collection, and again, just kind of promoting our textile campaign with the bins and other charities. At this point, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any questions from any fellow board members? Yes.
Thank you, Jamie. I've been in contact with a number of waste disposal companies, and what they told me was that they're planning on, at some point, charging $90 to remove a mattress. And like they said, that's individual people, it's not, you know, negotiated town deals or anything, but this sounds like it's going to cost you, cost us, a lot of money. I can understand what they're doing. It goes into effect November 1st. I would just keep a very close eye on that price. If it starts crawling up and up and up, we're going to have to do something. We know that. It's the one, but like I said, I had been in contact with three haulers, and they all basically, they went from 85 to 95 per mattress. And now, that's individuals calling up, so I would just warn everyone to be very careful. If you're going to buy a new mattress, buy it now.
Yeah, and to that point, a lot of times, too, when you do buy a new mattress, there's a program at the store that will offer to take it back, and we would recommend residents take advantage of that program. I can tell you, our DPW staff did a survey of surrounding towns. We're still waiting to hear back from some, but out of approximately 16 that we polled, 11 of those 16 are actually not going to do anything for the residents. They're treating it just like a similar trash ban on construction debris, for instance. So, if somebody were to call for a mattress, they would advise the resident to essentially call a mattress recycling company and do it independently. And I think the reason for that is there's just so much demand right now. Every town in the state has to do this, and I think the big three or four trash haulers just don't have the capacity to handle this. So, we're lucky with Casella, they don't have too many towns in the state, and they have offered us a pretty advantageous proposal that I believe we should take right now. I do agree with you, Mr. DePalma, I believe the price will go up in subsequent years, and then we'll have to deal with it at that point, but right now, we have a pretty good proposal.
No, it is a good deal. Thank you.
So, with that arrangement that you're talking about, is that a one-year deal?
It's currently a one-year deal, yes. And with our trash proposal, with our current trash contract, it was a five-year contract. I believe we have two years left after this year, so we would be revamping the contract within a couple of years.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Jeff?
Excuse me. Thank you, Jamie. Just, I wanted to go back to the organics, food waste. So, are we talking composting? Are they currently doing compost, or is it just a special pickup? How does that work with the schools and stuff?
So, our schools currently are not composting food waste. It's kind of a larger animal, again, that would likely have to be addressed next trash contract, because what we don't want to happen is, in our five-year contract, the state changing the regulation to drop down to a quarter-ton per week, and then all of a sudden, we're stuck. So, we'll likely have to have some language in there.
Okay.
And whether or not they're, they're certainly composting the organics on-site at a school, there's all sorts of other issues with vectors and rodents that would be involved.
Sure.
Likely, what other larger facilities doing that currently have to abide by the one per week is they bring in a very, very large toter for, say, kitchen scraps.
Okay.
That toter would be wheeled to the loading dock and hauled up by a separate organics truck from the vendor.
Okay, so it would be a separate program that we'd have to...
And what they do with that at that point, they're likely composting at a compost facility, but it would be outside of Wilmington.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was wondering. I know there are, you know, bootstraps, there's a lot of green, black earth, or whatever it's called, that do that. I'm just wondering if path, it sounds like that's the path we're probably going to be going down at some point.
Could be.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Well...
Anything to my right? Are you good?
Seems like quite a big reduction, like, you know, it's basically taking a cut in and a half.
Yeah.
I mean, that's quite significant. What do you think the rationale is behind?
Well, again, they set a solid waste master plan goal for the next 10 years to reduce it by 30% overall trash tonnage, but the long-term goal for 2050 would be a 95% reduction.
Wow, that's just crazy.
It's a lot, but when we look at our numbers for just our schools, we're in compliance. So, and it's only for schools right now and commercial entities. So, your typical sub-shops really aren't generating that much food scrap. I mean, they might have, you know, some vegetables and things that they're throwing out, but a half-ton per week is really a lot, and if you're throwing out that much material and food, your profit margin must be very small.
Agreed. Good point. So, at this time, do you want us to entertain a motion for the fee structure that you asked?
The recommendation, yes.
Okay, yeah. Since it is a scheduled appointment, we can take that up. I would like to make a motion to accept the rented pricing for the disposal of mattresses.
I will make the recommendation.
Okay, motion's been made. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, moving on to our next appointment, which is with Kristen Costa regarding 168 Lowell Street affordable units, regulatory agreement. Good evening, Kristen.
Hi.
My sincere apologies for the delay.
Actually, learning a lot, a lot of different things. I'm Kristen Costa with LA Associates. I'm the lottery agent for the affordable units at the project at 168 Lowell. It's actually called Rachel's Village now, for what that's worth, and I handled the permitting, and now I'm handling the lottery, which I started marketing for. But with regard to the permitting, the application for these units that went to the state initially, excuse me, y'all voted on and endorsed for signature to the state, it then got approved. Part of that application was a draft regulatory agreement. Now, the regulatory agreement restricts, it kind of governs the project with regard to affordability, it restricts resale, it identifies the initial sale price, initial condo fee of the affordable units, and, you know, what can and cannot happen with them. It goes on record now, you know, soon, as the construction's happening, but certainly before any affordable unit would be closed and recorded. And like I said, it basically governs what happens with the unit. It went to the state in draft form, they approved it, some minor changes, and then back to us. So, they are asking for three copies to be signed. The developer signs, the town will sign, or you will vote, and they will likely sign, and then it will go back to the state, they will sign and send back two originals to go on record. So, that's why I'm here, is to ask for that, you know, that discussion, and hopefully sign that agreement. You probably have copies.
Yes.
Likely as the originals.
So, Jeff, in receiving this, do you have any questions, recommendations, and comments to offer?
Certainly recommend that the board authorize to execute the agreement on behalf of the board. The agreement has been reviewed by town council, as was stated, this part of the process, as Valerie Gingrich, the Planning and Conservation Director noted, fulfilling the 15% inclusionary zoning element that was changed a few years ago in the zoning bylaw, so I would recommend a vote of approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments at all from any board members?
Just as a point of interest, I know it's, I've seen an advertisement, it's been posted out there publicly, people just apply based on the guidelines, and then what, how is the act of the lottery actually done? Like, how do you decide one applicant from the next in terms of being awarded in the lottery?
So, when an application comes to me, I process it for eligibility, and if a buyer meets the requirements, basically income limit, asset limit, and provides an approval letter for a mortgage, okay, so they're essentially eligible, they would be put in the lottery. Now, this particular lottery has a local preference, which is common in many towns, so three of the five units are set aside for local preference, so there's that piece as well. You know, if the applicant is local, they would have to demonstrate and support that. And so, if, you know, applicants are eligible, they get a ballot number. Now, if an applicant household is eligible for the local preference as well, they would get, their ballot number would be put in two pools, so they basically have an opportunity at all five units, whereas someone who does not qualify for local just has the opportunity for the two units.
Understood.
Okay, and so essentially, you know, people are notified of their ballot numbers, I hold the lottery, someone other than me will actually pull the numbers out, we rank, we put them on a board, rank them, you know, in order that they're drawn, and then there's an adjustment made. So, there's also a preference given for household size, so the state wants to house as many people as possible, so these are two-bedroom units. So, a two-bedroom household would have preference over a one.
Okay.
And so, once that list is there, I would then adjust it. The ballot numbers include a household size, and then I adjust it and move up, if you will, the two bedrooms over the ones, essentially, and then I end up with a final list, and the first top three in the local pool are offered or awarded those units, and the two top and the general are awarded those units.
Understood, okay. I think it's important people should be educated on how it works. I don't think most people know.
Bachelor?
Yes.
So, what is the, if someone is a single individual as opposed to a family of three, what's the point in applying if you're telling me that you're going to move those two family people up? Why go through the, you know, aggravation
Right.
of trying to get a mortgage, you know, qualify.
All the paperwork, yeah, there's a lot of paperwork, yeah.
It'll get you. That's what you fear.
Yeah, I'll tell you why, is because many people just expect that I get 50 applicants. You know, I mean, I get all these applica, I don't. You know, sometimes, I don't, just me myself, I talk and confer with other lottery agents, and you'd be surprised at how few we actually get that qualify. And when I say few, it could be 10 or 15, it could be maybe 20. That's on the high side. Even for five units, I've had 10 units, and I've had that, you know, that's not a whole lot. And then, what happens, you know, we have the list, and maybe they do get bumped over, if you will, but oftentimes, so there's five, oftentimes, these units, we have to wait, other than usually the first, for them to be constructed, so people's lives change. You know, some people may have, some buyers may be waiting three months, four months, six months, maybe as much as a year, and they have to remain eligible up until closing, okay? And I have to check, keep checking, and so, some of them don't. Some of them make more money by then, or they are in other lotteries and choose to, you know, buy there. Some move out of town, some, you know, lose jobs, get new jobs, all kinds of things, life, you know? So, I have had, let me just tell you, a handful of lotteries over my 25 years where I have had to go to that backup list, so I maintain that list, even if, you know, even if there's 20 people on it, I maintain it, and more often than not, in new construction like this, where folks are waiting, I've had to go to that backup list because people have chosen not to buy for one reason or another, or weren't able to. And I have awarded one-bed, I've awarded one-bedroom families to a three-bedroom unit because that's what was left on the list, you know what I mean? So, the chances are slim, but they're not none, and it's happened to me. Well, it's happened in projects I've worked with, yeah. So, I always encourage people, I know it's a lot, but I do.
And you mentioned three are designated for local.
Yes.
So, what if, so the other two have to come from outside of Wilmington?
Don't have to, because the local folks get their ballots in both pools, so they have a shot at the local units and the general, so all five. So, the general pool will have both.
All right, so, so, local people can, I mean, you might get all
You might get all five.
Five units being all local individuals.
Yes, exactly. And I just want to mention one more time about the size. These are two-bedroom units, so I'm going to get, I expect quite a few single folks. Now, if I had a three-bedroom or four-bedroom project, then it would be less likely that a single person, because the odds are even greater, but with a two-bedroom, you know, you might get a young couple, you know, that's a one-bedroom household, but it's still two people, you know? So, I wouldn't be surprised if I had had as many single-bedroom households as I do two-bedroom households.
And if people have questions, who do they contact?
Me, yeah, I might, yeah.
Do you have something that you're letting the town post in the website?
Oh, yeah, it's everywhere. It's on my website, it's on the state's website.
It's all over on social media.
It's all over social media, it's on the town's website, yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I can motion to approve the agreement.
Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
All those in favor?
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, thanks for your patience. Okay, moving right along to the Board of Selectmen discussion regarding the review of proposed special town meeting warrant. I'll turn it over to the manager.
So, Madam Chair, before you is a draft of the special town meeting warrant. These articles are placed in no particular order, but Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the town manager in consultation with the senior center building committee for the purpose of constructing, originally equipping and furnishing a new senior center, including site preparation and design costs and all costs incidental and related thereto. The second article is very similar, except applying to the town school administration building that is proposed, so it is my understanding that these articles are subject to the random selection in accordance with the bylaw. I would just note that there will be a meeting tomorrow, as we do each time before an annual or special town meeting, with the town moderator, town council, chair of the Board of Selectmen, chair of the Finance Committee, and other staff to discuss and prepare for this special town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to communications.
The first item under communications is a status on the most recent meeting with the senior center building committee. They met on August 31st to review the cost estimate and consider recommendations for so-called value engineering, which is essentially looking at the various elements of the project and see if there's opportunities to trim the cost. Some of the changes that were considered, including building materials, doing away with this design for a pergola. Ultimately, the committee looked at some of the proposed or potential changes to materials and concluded that while it may have a short-term advantage in terms of cost, there was a concern amongst committee members about the long-term maintenance costs of some of these lesser materials, so most of the items were, the committee was recommending to keep them as is, with one exception, there's a proposal for a stamped concrete patio surface... as is, with one exception, there's a proposal for a stamped concrete patio surface, and the suggestion or the recommendation of the committee is to go with a brushed surface, which is a savings of $67,735. There was also discussion about a, an emergency generator at the moment that is included in the, in the proposal, there was still some discussion back and forth as to whether, in the long run, it would be advisable to have an emergency generator, and if so, what specific functions that would activate, so the expectation is, at the next meeting of the committee, that will be, a final recommendation will be made on that. Next item under communication is a similar update to the, on the town school building committee meeting, and I'll turn that over to Selectman Kyra.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. On September 7th, the town school building committee met to review cost estimates prepared by PMNC LLC, a firm that specializes in cost estimating for construction projects. Dan Pallotta, the owners' project manager, the OPM, reviewed two projections. The estimate of $37,495,766 includes a $190,000 of technology costs associated with equipment required by WCTV. A control room has been included in the design to enable coverage of meetings held in the two hearing rooms. Equipment similar to the existing equipment in Room Nine here that is used to cover board of selectmen meetings and other board and committee meetings would be required in the new building. Second cost estimate of $37,305,766 excludes WCTV technology equipment. The OPM, Mr. Pallotta, advised that the committee provide direction on whether or not to make the WCTV equipment part of the project cost. The cost estimate was described as a worst-case scenario, and includes design and construction contingencies in an adjustment of 7.9% for inflation. The total project cost exclusive of WCTV technology includes costs for the OPM services, architect and design services, construction, fixtures, furnitures, equipment, IT and telephone and data transmissions. Mr. Pallotta stated that he will be working with Phil O'Brien of Johnson Roberts to conduct a value engineering similar to the effort made with the senior center project. This effort involves considering alternatives on specific elements on the building and on the site to determine whether there are less expensive ways and approaches for this project. The committee will not meet on the usual time period, which would have been September 21st, but they will be meeting on September 28th to allow Jan and Phil the opportunity to research and come up with these cost factors for the committee.
Next, under communications, is a flyer that was sent out by Samantha Kavanaugh, who's our wellness and substance abuse coordinator, just notes that the Seventh Annual Candlelight Vigil is scheduled on September 19th, 6:30 PM at the Wilmington Town Common. She just notes, "Join the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition in a night of community, as we remember our lost loved ones, and celebrate recovery. The evening will highlight the importance of health, home, purpose, and community, four critical dimensions for successful recovery," and it notes, "Special guests include selectwoman Judy O'Connell, Chief Joe Desmond, Wilmington High School soundscape acapella, and two local individuals in recovery." Also, under communications, is a memo from me to the board noting that the town was able to receive $75,000 in supplemental funding from the state for the Frank Kelly track. You'll recall, that was a vote at our most recent annual town meeting, the appropriation was $520,000 when the bids were issued, as has been the case unfortunately with most bids, they came in above that, and so, fortunately, with this $75,000 from the state, we're able to complete all of the work, which was based upon some recent photos that Jamie McGoldy sent me, it's in large part there, I think the remaining piece is to do the striping of the track, so that's a good news for the town. Next is a memo from Brian Perry, our finance director, providing an update on Munis, and he notes that in May, the departments began using the accounts payable application in Munis, all vendor invoices are now processed through Munis, required confirming that the chart of accounts was ready, and handles all the information, also required staff training. Invoices are processed electronically versus paper documents, which was the old system, everything had to be sent down to the accounting office and hand-entered into soft write. The next phase is payroll and human capital, which includes employee pay to be processed through the Munis system, attendance and earned time accruals. He also notes that there's $300,000 remaining in the appropriation to complete the execution of this project. Next is a memo from Jamie McGoldy, and this talks about the efforts to address vehicular speeds on Nickel Street. He highlights efforts going back to January of 2021, in which personnel from Public Works and the police met with residents to hear concerns, explain the federal and uniform traffic standards that the town must work through, and also offered some commitments to reviewing the existing signs in step-up traffic enforcement. He notes that one sign on the southbound lane near Ohio Street was identified as being missing and was replaced, and 39 dates from January of '20 through August of '22 had specific enforcement assigned in addition to the routine traffic enforcement that patrols do. Also noted that data gathered by the police from April of '21 finds that the average truck speed is 30.7 miles per hour, the average car speed is 32.7 miles per hour, and the trucks comprise 3% of the volume. The state generally requires 5% to 8% of the trucks by numbers in order to consider a truck exclusion. Information was provided more recently to a resident concerned about truck speeds and signage and explained the standards. The town has also committed to locating a driver feedback sign on Nickel Street, which flashes the speed that the vehicles are moving at, the sign is particularly effective because it can be targeted to particular areas and will be there for a stretch of time and then moved, as opposed to permanent signs which appear over time to kind of blend in with the rest of the scenery, so to speak.
Jeff, if I may just add to that, on August 31st, we had an internal meeting, if you recall, board members at the last meeting when we had this discussion, I had asked for a meeting with the chief and the police department, and they did honor that, so I did go in and have a sit-down meeting. They went over everything that was in this memo, I asked them to draft a memo, as Jeff is indicating, that, that sign, that flashing sign with driver feedback is actually also collecting statistical data, that we wanted to let it go for, you know, a certain period of time, and then there'll be metrics that will be derived from there as well, and it's at a later point, we will have, we will have the parties that are reflective in this memo in to have a discussion with the board, to provide enough data as to how things are going at Nickel Street, you know, for the board to ask questions and understand the trends and what we're seeing. Every single question, and I don't want to elongate the meeting, but every single question that came out of the meeting at the Board of Selectmen was basically asked, and they had very definitive answers for, for every single question that I had, so, obviously in the spirit of transparency, I can field any of those questions, but just rest assured that they have statistical data, reports, call logs, they were willing to open any and all documentation to me, and, you know, they remain committed to this process, to try and, you know, work with the community as a whole to provide traffic enforcement. I asked them, on behalf of the board, if they felt that they had all of the equipment that they needed, and that if there was any ask that they might have had from a budgetary standpoint, they felt that they have all the necessary tools to be successful with traffic enforcement, they expressed gratitude for any funding that the town has provided to them in this regard, and, you know, will continue to, to update the agenda with updates on the subject matter as we move forward.
Madam Chair, just, and I had had a brief discussion with town manager Hou regarding the, it was mentioned at our meeting with, with the public that there's three different speed signs on that road, and that could have been done when it wasn't as dense, and I know that there's some density regulation that the Registry of Motor Vehicles has to, to regulate the speeding, so I'm wondering if that can be checked, you know, housing comes in, things change, so that instead of it being 25, 30, and 35, it may all be 25, or maybe 30, you know, be based upon what was built for construction to add density on that street, you know.
Correct, so, I'm not going to articulate it as well as Jamie McGoldy could, could do, but he had had some statistical analysis there in terms of car trips in the, in the average speed of vehicles that, and correct me if I misstate this, but that mass DOT typically will set speed limit regulations based on the typical rate of speed that the drivers are comfortable passing that route at, and he said that if that, if that street was reevaluated from mass DOT standards, that there's, there's a chance that in some areas where there's a lower speed limit, it could actually end up being increased as a result of that analysis. Is that what you recall?
Yes, that's right. And just on that point, so, there was, he noted, back in 2014, at the request of residents at the time who were concerned about speed issues, there were 25 mile-an-hour signs put down on the, on the South Street side of the road there, those are essentially advisory signs, they're not enforceable, but the premise was where people come off of Whipple Road onto Nickel Street to try to caution them to slow down as they enter that area, but again, those signs are advisory signs, so to speak, they're not enforceable. The other signs, there's one section, I believe, that references 35 miles an hour, if you're coming off of 129 and you take the right onto Nichols, you're confronted with a 35 mile-an-hour sign, and I believe when you get over the bridge, there are, it's a 30-mile sign, 30 mile-per-hour sign, those signs at, at various points, and I don't have the specific dates in front of me, were authorized by the board, but again, as Chair O'Connell noted, to go back and revisit those runs the risk that, you know, based upon the average speed, that the existing signs could wind up being modified up as opposed to the intended modification of down. The other, the other point, I guess I would make that Jamie also noted in some of his communications, is that one of the things that, because one of the folks that had expressed concerns, one of the residents, was suggesting a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit through the whole stretch, and there is a provision of law that allows communities to adopt a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit on secondary roads in the absence of any other posted speed limit, and the challenge there becomes that if it's a unrealistically low speed limit, people are not going to adhere to it, and it's just, it's not going to be particularly effective.
I did notice, I drove down there, I noticed that the electric traffic sign was up, and that's great, I also noticed the one on Woburn Street was missing, so I'm assuming that it was moved over there, and in driving here tonight, I noticed the one on Glen Road wasn't working, so.
No, there's a component, yeah.
So, there's a component piece that is known that it's not working, that came up in the meeting.
Okay.
Because I pass through it every day.
Okay.
And then, the other factor is that the signage had to, some signage had to be rotated with the water ban issue with the boil order, they ended up moving some signs, I don't know exactly the date that you saw it, but there's the, there are multiple traffic concerns that are reported beyond just Nickel Street, so the traffic enforcement officer, Dan Furbish, indicated that they're working on a myriad of different areas of concern for, for traffic, so they've agreed to kind of move a sign around to different areas.
I'm talking about the little sign, not, not-
Not the portable ones.
Not one of the big portable, big ones, it's just, I'm talking about the little-
Right, the little one that-
That's over in Nickel Street now.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the intent is that they're gonna move, move them around from place to place.
And I think the other item that the chief indicated, that there may be an opportunity to get a couple additional mobile signs through a grant, so that's going to be pursued as well.
So, again, I think we'll be revisiting this again.
Next is a, another memo from Jamie McGoldy and other staff with regard to an update on the ARPA funding. You'll recall that $7 million, $7,864 was authorized by the federal government to the town, the largest portion of that, which is 5.5 million, is targeted for replacement and upgrade of a water main on Woburn Street, essentially from Cajun Way down to Lowell Street. We're in the process now of awarding a contract, there were two engineering contracts that came in, so that will be done shortly. Another element called for catch basin upgrades, the initial amount that was in the budget for this was $1 million to address roughly 200 catch basins, improve the water quality outflows at certain locations. You'll recall that $450,000 was redirected to address the project at Jefferson Road when it became apparent that the budget for that project was, and the amount that we received from Mass Works was not going to be adequate, we were able to get through really Paul Looney's efforts, additional funding from Mass Works, and we, as well as Princeton, agreed to support that, so $450,000 was drawn down from that, leaving a balance of $550. Since then, one of the other elements, we're looking to use $44,000 to hire Kleinfelter, who's one of our engineering consultants, water engineering consultants, to evaluate the water supply system, the long-term plan for the town, this would be a 50-year outlook that would look at the prospect of continuing with our existing hybrid system, where we have the two water treatment plants and our own water source, as well as MWRA. The other option that would be looked at is the prospect of just going full MWRA and essentially doing a cost benefit for that, so that, the $44,000 that has been redirected for that purpose. Contact tracing, you'll recall, was initially budgeted at $50,000, you know, fortunately, we haven't had to use any of that at this point, I guess it'll remain to be seen as we get into the colder weather, hopefully that will not have to be used for that purpose at this point. $300,000 was earmarked for facade and streetscape movements, that is still in the works, the first element of the economic development piece is this branding and marketing, $1,000 was budgeted- $1,000 was budgeted for that. The contract for Sterling and Company was 48,320, so that in the works. Grant administration, we have used a limited amount, I believe about 1,300 and change. Clifton Larson Associates, they're doing this administration for a number of modalities, and they have worked with Brian Perry on making sure we're compliant with the setup in dealing with the ARPA folks. And next is the letter that went to Michael Busby, the relationship manager of Mass Housing Finance. This was a comment letter that was generated based upon, it also included the comments made by residents of the town, primarily Nickel Street. We have not received any response to that comment letter, although that we should expect a response sometime in October.
Just as a follow-up to that, if I may, is that, can you confirm, just for like that, that this comment letter is a little online?
I, I believe it, I, is it?
It is. Perfect. Yep, so it's out there. Okay, that's important. And then also as a follow-up, during that meeting, State Representative David Robertson indicated that he had been working on a few drafts of a letter that he was submitting. Do you know if that letter has been submitted? Do we have a copy of it, and is that on our website?
I have not seen a copy of the letter. I, I can follow up with him, so I don't, I have not seen the letter.
Has anyone seen the letter?
No, no, but wouldn't that letter have to come to us to be submitted as a package rather than individual? Because it's supposed to come from the town, right? Why we had the residents include all of their, their letters?
Yeah, I didn't see it in here, so that's what made me ask, so I would have, would have thought that that would be the case, but maybe he sent it.
I don't know, yeah, I'm guessing, but I don't know that he sent it directly.
So maybe if we can just take an action item just to let us know.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to what to consider, the first one we already have taken up and approved, so we could move on to item number seven.
Yes, number seven is a request of the Recreation Commission, the 54th Annual Horribles Parade on Sunday, October 23rd, and the goblins and ghosts will be proceeding from the Public Safety Building, invading the school, high school cafeteria.
Nice. So just, I believe I heard you say October 23rd, is it the 30th?
Um, the.
Sunday, October 30th.
I'm sorry, Sunday, October 30th, yes.
Perfect.
And it starts, they'll be assembling at the, at 4:30 at the Public Safety Building.
Perfect. Any questions, comments, or a motion to grant the request?
Make a motion to grant the request for October 30th, 2022.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Next is a, a request from the, for a license to sell Christmas trees for the Wilmington Methodist Church and the Boy Scouts of America Troop 56. So the board is asked to authorize this and also to waive the fee.
Move to grant the request?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. I'd also just note for the record that there are recommendations in here as well from the police chief, basically recommends approval.
Yes.
As well as the building inspector recommends approval. So motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, the next one is a board to consider executing the agreement between the Town of Wilmington and the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, which is the ASME Local 1703 Unit 2. This is the public works, library, and clerical staff. This is a two-year contract, and the COLAs are 2.75 and 2.75. There were some other modifications, principally the vacation for new hires was altered. As it, as it stood, individuals that were hired after, in early November, would not be able to, any vacation time for 13 months until, not the first January, but the second January out. So that, you know, created some challenges for people coming from other communities that may have had, or other employers with other, that had vacation coming into the town. So that was, that was modified. The, some of the other modifications included recognizing Juneteenth Day, which of course is a state holiday, but certainly the most significant element is the COLA. So I would recommend the board authorize and execute this two-year agreement, which runs from 7/1/22 to 6/30/24.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain. I have a family member that works at the library.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. We have a call for the vote, we have one abstention, any, all those in favor? Okay, and the rest is in favor. Thank you.
Next is a board to consider executing the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Wilmington and Wilmington Community TV, WCTV. So this, this has been a long stand, long journey, and I see two individuals here who, to their credit, been very persistent, a lot of things going on, certainly in our collective lives here, and, you know, fortunately, at the end of the day, through the efforts of Susan Inman, across the fine, in working with, with the current WCTV director, who is in the audience, is seeing, and predecessor, were able to throw this up. So when I came to Wilmington in 87, I think WCTV, shortly before Ben Form, Charlie Gilbert was one of the main spearheads, and I think at the time, there may have been an agreement in place, but it hung since language. So the intent agreement is really to establish the terms and conditions of relationship. It talked about the requirements of CTV in terms of provide coverage, certainly principal responsibilities for, which are the meetings, annual and special, Board of Select meetings, the committee meetings, finance committee meetings. So there's a number of hours of coverage of other events that are stipulated in the agreement. It's a 10-year agreement, and so I would recommend that the board authorize, executing the agreement. It has been reviewed by council. I think that covers it.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, stender for to consider is a request from Dana Burnham, Wilmington United Methodist Women's Group, to place lawn signs on the town, publicize their harvest, Holly Fair, to be held on Saturday, September 24, 2022. As you know, the past practice has been to allow the signs, two on, on the church street side and two on the Middlesex side.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Also a board to consider request of Joan Sirforce, Director of the Wilmington Community Fund, to place two signs on the town common for Sunday, beginning Sunday, September 18th, advertising the Wilmington Community Fund's shredding event, which is also going to be happening on Saturday, September 24th. Again, the same premise would apply.
Okay.
Motion to accept.
Motion's to accept, is it made?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next is a board to consider request of Gigi Shenlujian to light the town in pink during the month of October, breast cancer awareness. I think Ms. Shenlujian has made this request for a number of years here in the last few, and this is something that gets worked with public works and public buildings in terms of the lenses, and she graciously makes the fund for the cost of the lens.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made to grant the request, it's seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I have a curiosity question to the town manager with the lights, and it's very nice that everybody, you know, we have the yellow and the pink and the, and I know people have to spend money on it, but I, isn't there something nowadays where it's, you can get these lights, digital lights that automatically change, rather than having to change them out every single time you get the one bulb and it actually changes colors? And I was wondering if that has ever been looked at, just for this, you know, cost-saving purposes?
Right.
So that these individuals, it's very nice that they make the contribution, or it is, but I, we do it so often, you know, for the veterans, it's green in November and cancer, pink in October, and so on and so forth, so.
Right, it's interesting you mention that. I was having this conversation with George Hooper last week. He commented that, that there are LED lights. I don't know if currently in place or soon to be in place would allow you to do that. I can check with him and see if there is anything currently available for these lights on the common, but I know he specifically mentioned that it's, it's something we will have access to soon.
Oh, good. Great.
Next under board to consider is a request of Carrie DeProffio, President of Wilmington High School Girls of Crossburgs, to use the municipal parking lot on Sex Ave for a fundraising wash on Sunday, April 30, 2023, with a rain date of Sunday, May 7, 2023. As you know, have been more and more frequent, it seems. I would just note, you know, one of the concerns frankly that I have had, particularly this year with the drought situation, and I think it did come up at a prior selectmen's meeting, is to whether it would be advisable to continue to allow these kind of events, particularly when, when we're in a situation like we are now. I've had communications with the chair and suggested one option that groups like this might consider is contacting one of the two car washes in town to see if they might be receptive to, similar to sometimes the 99 will have a day, if you buy a lunch there or a meal, they'll designate a certain amount of the proceeds for the particular cause. Would, would the, one or the other of the car washes be willing to, to do something similar, or, you know, perhaps even go to the 99 and make a similar request?
So putting it out there, board, I mean, I, I had had this conversation with Jeff as he had indicated, and I think that we should have a discussion. We had, I think, one or two requests that came in that they proposed a date, and the agenda was already set for the meeting, so that would have kicked them to the next meeting cycle for us, which would have been past the date they had requested. So it's a logistical issue, so I'm concerned of the optics of we've approved some up to this point, and then we would potentially be saying no to others, and we've already allowed others, like them, others to have happened. But we, we need to have a discussion as a board, in my opinion, based on the amount of requests we're getting, you know, how we feel about people, not only are we in a drought situation, but we've been in a water ban for a while.
Yeah.
And, you know, some people have opinions not being able to water their lawn or use irrigation systems as frequently as they want. But I also know that there are very few things that people can do for fundraisers that bring them 100% rate of return. So by doing it with way, you know, through the town use at the, at the Fourth of July, it's, it's a safe area, you know, it's, it's essentially on the town's dime, and they get 100% of the proceeds, and the kids and the coaches and the parents can get involved. So, you know, I don't know if people have any thoughts on this. I don't want to rain on anyone's parade, but.
I'll add, oh.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is prior to you coming on the board.
Yes.
The, the prior members of the Board of Selectmen received these requests, as you did when you were on the board beforehand, but we had always made a motion to approve it based upon if there was a water issue or a water ban, then they would be asked not to, to have a car wash. Now, that seemed to be something that we put into motion, and every time these came up, we made that, we made a motion with the caveat that, you know, if the town is in a water ban, then they would not be allowed to have a car wash. Now, the situation we had, and I brought this up, I think, a couple of meetings ago, was when we had the ice bucket challenge.
Right.
And there was a big sign that said water ban, and I didn't think that that was a good look. So I, you know, we approved that, and, you know, I'll do anything for ALS.
Of course.
You know, but that should have been really considered as well, so, you're right. I mean.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just on your comment that, you know, we've approved, and I was going to mention what, what Mr. Kira just said too, we're going into a new fiscal year with this request, so I think, you know, we could exercise our right to say, you know, in the new year, we won't be doing these or approving these or something, just given that it's going to be in 2023, and we've already approved them in 2022, but maybe we have to reconsider it in 2020. If not, I agree with, with Mr. Kira's say that we put that stipulation on there about, you know, if we're in a water ban. I mean, it's, it's in the spring, you know, we could also argue, you know, people may think it's a waste of water and, you know, it's one of those things. But I agree with you, it's, it's difficult to fundraise these days for anything, and like you said, it's 100%, you know, profit for them, but it's, it's difficult, but.
Any thoughts?
I, I, it's tough, you know, because they're doing it for a good cause, but what I think we might want to do is, we've been accepting these all along. What if we accept these, accept this one, you're coming into the fall where these are going to start fading out, and then we take it, we take it up at a board meeting to set some kind of a guideline or regulation down on how we're going to address these from this point forward. I know since I've been on the board, it's always been brought, brought up as long as we're not in a water drought.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but if, if we're going to look at this, I think we should give these groups that are here now, let them, let them get their car washed, and then we got to sit down and we got to address it. I don't see it as a major problem, but I think when, when we're in a water crisis at all, you know, if the town's saying no watering, that includes car wash.
Madam Chair.
One of the things I was just going to say, maybe we could potentially send a memo to the schools or to the, some of the youth groups and just try to encourage them that these requests are going to come forward, you know, work with us and see if you can try to plan them for the spring. I like the planning in the time of this one, it's April 30th, I'm hoping we're still not in a drought, April 30th, but try to steer them away from June, July, August.
Summer months, right.
Early September where we potentially could have a drought. Maybe we could try to avoid the problem.
Yeah.
And just say, listen, we want to work with you, we want to help you out, but you got to work with us too. We can't be telling people there's a water ban and advertising for car washes.
Right.
So maybe we could try to get the word out there that we're steering them towards a particular time of year.
So just to add to that, Jeff, is my recollection correct that the only ones that we didn't approve were because we didn't have a meeting to approve it the way it was supposed to be approved in front of this body and/or a date conflict?
So there was at least one, and I'm thinking maybe two, requests that we received here after the meeting had already been posted. In one instance, I think they're, they were looking for some September dates and then October dates, and, and so that one is still pending. I, you know, I indicated it could be brought forward.
The next meeting.
For the next meeting, but they're looking at an October date. For the next meeting, but they're looking at an October date of October of 22. And Beverly, was there another one? I thought there were two, but maybe it was just one. Oh, that's right.
October and the dates are available.
Yeah.
Because we already have something else booked. Right. So it's been more about schedule conflict or meeting conflict that we haven't been able to put it before the body. And they asked for a date that we would have already passed by the time we meet again. So we haven't denied anybody based on water usage. It's been more about scheduling, just so you all know. But we have to take it, you know, we can either take action on this, we can motion to table it. I mean, they're obviously trying to plan and get out there in front. So I, I like that. I mean, do we approve this and it's subject to not having a water ban in effect at the time?
Do we approve it unless there's a water ban still posted by?
All right.
I'll make a motion to move the, grant the request.
Subject to there not being a water ban in place.
Sure.
That's second.
Which remained in.
Discussion?
Yes.
Just, are we, or Beverly, are we keeping track? Have we had to deny anybody this year due to the water ban from 91?
No, I don't think anybody's been denied.
Yeah, we haven't. Yeah. We do keep track so that no, I mean, I know you guys keep a calendar, but we're, we're in a water ban. If one is, you know, just making it up next week, we're going to call them and say, hey, you can't have this because we're in a water ban, if that were the situation.
You know, and I, I think we need to, you know, challenge is going to be certainly we'd be calling, you know, a couple of weeks.
No, no, of course.
You know, we'd have to probably, I would think, at least them a month, maybe even more because have to retool and figure out how else to.
I, I just, my question is, is that we are cognizant that the, I mean, that they're on the calendar and if we're in a ban, we can call them and do time to say, hey, we're in a water ban, this may not happen or can't hap.
Yes, I think we.
My fear is that like, you know, we're seeing unless there's a water ban and then happens while there's a water ban, you know what I mean? We don't fly them.
Right. Yeah, we'll just have to set up a tickler of sorts so that, you know, maybe six weeks out or what it is, eight weeks out. You know, we check the calendar that we've got one coming up and.
Yeah.
And if it's, there's a water ban, they'll have to be advised.
Okay.
They'll go.
Well, technically we've had, we had some that have taken place during the water ban.
That, that's why I'm bringing that up.
You know, and others that are scheduled. Going to happen during the water ban, so.
That's what I mean is it's, we're putting that in as a provision, but we're not holding to that provision.
Right. I think that the, the way I internalize what I just, what, what is currently in the process to be voted is we're going to hold the line futuristically.
Okay.
The water ban, but that we're not, this year, we're not going to be kind of just things midstream for lack of a better way to, so that we're not be seem to be penalizing one group who have already, already been able to fly.
Yeah.
I don't know if, are you guys okay with that?
That's fine. We, I'm just saying, we just, we did have that session in when we approved them this year. So we did, we're right to tell them they couldn't have it with the water ban, but I don't think we did.
No, we haven't, we haven't declined anybody. So notwithstanding the ban, we did not.
Yeah, not with, that's the ban. Right, right, right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So motions have been made and seconded. We've had discussion. Anything further? All those in favor?
Unanimous. Thank you. All right. So moving on, the last portion of the agenda is the board to consider performance evaluation of the town manager and the goals. So I know that the night and long, but this, this is a sorry task for tonight. A little bit of time here, pass out some information. Jeff, do you copy or do you need a copy? So I am going to pass to each of you manager evaluation and a little indulgence just to kind of set the stage a little bit publicly. So as people may recall, in the past, there were discussions regarding the town manager's contract and that there should be an annual evaluation of the town manager's performance per the terms of the town manager's contract. If we were to do a performance evaluation, we needed to do it within a certain timeframe and issue the performance evaluation to the manager before a certain date. And we have executed on that as has been stated in prior meeting records. So each member was invited to submit a performance evaluation on behalf of the town manager. You all did do that and thank you for your efforts. What you are receiving is considered to be a composite draft of everybody's feedback essentially put onto one composite final draft for presentation tonight. It should be reflected that no member of this board has received a copy of this until right at this very moment. That's required based on the open meeting law that we wouldn't be able to deliberate on this prior to tonight's meeting. So this is quite a lengthy document. And the reason for that is that members of the, of the board had varying comments. And so I did not strip anything away that, that was unique. So if you had, if you were the one person that comment, did not editorially take that comment away, it needed to be reflected in the performance evaluation so everybody's thoughts and opinions and next were included. So basically, I'm to be taking you through the evaluation. Please note, I will not reading every line item, but will provide a view of the evaluation. I will share some highlights in each of the criteria that is included in the document. I have spent multiple hours already with the manager going over the evaluation shortly after it was issued. Since that time, Jeff provided a summary description of his goals and objectives in our last communication package. He's also provided some goals and initiatives through prior meetings as well. And we are now here tonight to discuss this evaluation in public session as required. So at the end, board members will be able to ask any questions. You'll be able to make any comment you so choose. The manager will also have the opportunity to do the same. And then ultimately, I'll be looking for a vote of this board to accept this performance evaluation of rec, for the town manager. Additionally, it should be noted that with Jeff signing off on this evaluation, it does not constitute that he has to be in full agreement. It's contents. It simply states that he is acknowledging the receipt evaluation, that it was delivered within the time period required based on the terms of his contract, and that it would be considered his performance evaluation of record for this time period. Is everybody clear on that? So this is the appraisal system we have, this was given to me as the chair is what was adopted appraisal system to evaluate the town manager. It is basically, the intent is to provide direct constructive back about the employee's performance, identifying any strengths or areas that we believe could, could have some improvement. And it is just a form for career planning and it is one of several criteria making any sort of employment or promotional decisions. So there's a rating scale we used and it had a system that we used to evaluate. Below expectations is considered one point. Performance is unsatisfactory or didn't meet the established standards or objective. The meets expectations is a two system, generally and occasionally exceeded establishes or objectives, perform reliably, reliably and required only normal, uh, normal supervision and follow-up, and possesses and fully utilizes knowledge, skills and the ability to meet the responsibilities of the position held. And then exceeds expectation was three points, frequently exceeded the established standards or objectives, often demonstrated initiative and creativity, mastered and carried out all phases of job responsibilities with minimal supervision and performed at a consistently high level. So there are multiple criteria and I'll take you through, and this is where I'll summarize in a more brief fashion. The first performance criteria is quality of work and it referred to how well the employee performs the work. If it was thorough and accurate and complete, neat and presentable, consistent with skill and craftsmanship and consistently maintained quality even under pressure. So the overall consensus of the board was that the manager met expectations in the past year. And in, in two instances on the work is neat and presentable, there was an exceeds expectation. There were some comments that were added that everyone agreed in consensus that Jeff is very neat and presentable. He is very thorough in his memos and email correspondence and that his general work is satisfactory. There was a comment regarding constructive feedback in that the board would like to see the town manager be more receptive to some of these types of conversations when they occur. In my conversations with the manager, you know, he adjusted that in the future, if people come forward with feedback, that they come ready with suggestions on how things could improve and he would be open and receptive to that. The next is the quantity of work. It was in terms of meeting deadlines, everyone on this board had given a meet expectations for this. Overall, the felt that the manager in his communication is very, and that he gets back to board members and members in a timely fashion and that information very informative. There were some suggestion on the part of some members of the board that were looking for more, more status updates and perhaps amended a bi-weekly status report at a high level. They acknowledged among everyone that Miss is often working late in meetings at town. Everyone complimentary of commitment in his engagement. There were some concerns expressed about late hours, that he is overworked. There was a concern about a burnout factor and that, you know, the overwhelming task that he, and based on just the nature of job, that there are Russian summonses to meet deadlines and understanding, you know, that package need to be up to the minute information and that there's a diligence between getting information out in a timely fashion prior to meetings and giving board members an opportunity to consider those topics before being asked out. And I know that the manager worked recently and, and just in role derive more of, more of a press that unless, that some of the items that require more than one meeting to review and that would, you know, not any deliberation in one meeting, but they can be taken too. And he would be looking for some direct on the board moving forward that if there were some items that were administrative and task nature did require to do two meetings, that we could just keep advancing this of the town and take those items on a one-meeting basis that reserve some of the more positive items for a two-meeting process. Moving on, running in organization, setting parties and the important tasks first, the overwhelming majority of the board put meets expectations for part B in this area, meeting objectives. There were one that stated meets expectations and four other members left it blank. And based on fact, the, why that was left blank is because board members expressed that they did not believe, which is confirmed true, that there was no formal layout of goals for this pasture. So it should be stated at this time that this performance evaluation is the time it's ever been. During my past decade being involved, I wasn't a decade on this board, but it's six-plus years, we had never done a performance evaluation and laid out any sort of formal goal, if you will. And, and the, well, that's, we've laid out performance goals in the past, goals and objectives, however, have not done a performance evaluation that we noted. So overall, the board believes that the town manager is getting things, things done and prioritizes recognizing that things are constantly changing, they impact the importance of this when things need to get done. There's a balancing of role responsibilities. There is some concern, the amount of tasks that there are cases where things may off the radar screen, while understanding that there are setbacks that happen to the nature of government in a busy school and, you know, that they would like to see some improvement in this area. There was definite expression of appreciation regarding the nation provided to the board of selectmen at meetings and the, that, you know, some issues that we have have been discussed for several years and no one is necessarily saying that this falls completely on the shoulders of the town manager. But there is some belief among the board that there are big action items that remain outstanding that need addressed and sure that will be reflective in some goals and objectives that will come out later on in the session. Moving on to communication, the overall consensus was that the manager meets expectations. In some instances, there was exceeds expectation. It's clear that he is a communicator, that he's, you know, writes in clear and understandable manner. He listens effectively and is open. He's sensitive to confidentiality and keeps supervisors fully informed. There was a large expression amongst the board members for a major desire to see improved communications with the Wilmington School Department and most specifically the school superintendent. This is not saying that the manager is not doing this. He is. This is more the board's reaction, in my opinion, to strengthening that relationship, concern about declining enrollment, concerned about some of the public issues that we've had. And we believe, you know, as a board, that this is a collective town responsibility to have all parties working cohesively and collaboratively together. And we have asked, you know, in a big way for the town manager as well as the school superintendent to double down on their efforts to cross communicate. I have spoken with Jennifer Bryson, who is the school committee chair, and I have kindly asked that she consider having same goal reflective in Dr. Glenn Brand's, you know, goals and objectives as well. And she was in agreement with that. So we're trying to have some synergy and commonality amongst boards and committees. There believe, there is a belief that regarding the town manager's workload, that now that we have our assistant town manager, Susan Inman, on board with us and is very quickly off and running, and we are hoping that there can be some workload balancing with the assistant town manager and her capabilities to assist the town manager with workload. Basically, the overall consensus is that his communications are satisfactory and moving on to the next criteria, which is the work attitude. Overall, there is meets expectations. There is one comment here about constructive system, which has been touched upon. The overall consensus that is receptive to board, is receptive to community members, is receptive to coworkers and to citizens, and that he is helpful in trying to answer questions, help people navigate governmental process, that he is able in handling difficult situation public and tries to in a courteous, common, tactful way and is respectful overall. So in some of the comments, there was talking about the desire to have a more proactive and seamless application process regarding residential and commercial construction meeting. We often get back from various people why one may have been approved or another probably have not been approved or certain conditions. And anytime I have brought issue to the manager, he's been, has been trying to investigate, you know, the rash nine certain decisions. I think, you know, overall, you know, this has been a concern and, and some of this has been redone regarding constructive back and being sure that we're working there to provide performance feedback on any developmental areas. So moving on to next area, Jeff certainly has the ability to work alone without continuous revision. He definitely is always looking at ways to accomplish that. I know that there are some boards that expressed for that to continue. And then overall, the, again, there are redundancy here, talk about the late hours. There is, there is some, there are more, if time on task, on of hours being were, you know, are there better ways and efficiencies that the town hall as a whole could, you know, be add to, you know, health enhancements and help potentially reduce work hours? That's a loaded topic. I don't think there's any, you know, fixes for that. But there, there are so many differences that are going on right now and, and quite to keep up with. I am sensing that what's requiring a lot of time for it. So debility talks about, you know, in giving best effort for the job, very normal business hours, certainly meditations. There were members that felt that he exceeded expectations, that he, the use of sick time and unscheduled time off in, you know, the majority of the board had exceeds expectation. One that had below expectation and it was more about the fact that he doesn't take any time off and it's very rare. So it's, it's kind of interesting how this performance evaluation can, can skew that reality. But he certainly does not abuse his sick time. He's a tireless worker. He wa, he works hours well beyond normal workday. He does inform the board when he's going on vacation or he's going to the office for any personal or business related issues. It is encouraged, I should take more time off. And, you know, the board members are concerned about the amount of work hours and would really like to see a enhancement of delegation of responsibilities now that we have a full staff at town hall in the town manager's office. Moving on to leadership, demonstrates on job supervisory skills, meets expectations, delegates responsibility and authority, authority to employees wisely. Some had meets expectations, some had below expectations, which I believe speaks to the fact that, you know, there's been changing of the guards at the assistant town manager level multiple times. And so, you know, in some instances, in the midst of change and, and other various factors, there may not have been as much delegation, but we're hopeful that that is going to continue to change in that there'll be a more balance of workload throughout town hall, not just in the town manager's office. Gains employees' trust and respect, overall meets expectations. There was some, you know, expression of concern that based on the busyness and just the day-to-day of being a town manager and being overloaded with a lot of things, does it, does it provide the opportunity to get out of the office and actually work on? the opportunity to get out of the office and actually work on, you know, employee development? And, and, and that's just was one person's expression is that, you know, they want to make sure that employee satisfaction and that, you know, the manager's visibility throughout town hall and around town, you know, continues. But overall, that criteria was meets expectations. So as I move through the criteria, the calculating of the points, essentially what I did was a mathematical exercise per category and I took and counted the rating scale as it, as it derived. There's a total point schedule that came out. The total subtotal, you know, score, fourteen point four eight five out of a maximum twenty-one points. From the leadership standpoint, there was one point eight five. So the overall point structure led to fourteen point two nine three point system that equates to meets expectation. So just from a standpoint, below expectation into twelve. Meets expectation is third to seventeen and exceeds expectation is eight to twenty-one. So Jeff is certainly in the end of meets expectations. So for the town managers of divs, what initiative would you like to see the town pursue? This is quite a lengthy list, but there were, there were conversations regarding schools, the senior center, police fire station, one on the assistant town manager, delegation of responsibility, less time working long hours, being more actively engaged in the recruitment of businesses in Wilmington, identify location for the North Wilmington substation, continue his conservative approach when developing the annual budget, setting clear expectations for the superintendent and the school department pertains to budgeting, working towards finding a long-term solution to our perceived communication problem with residents. For example, we are in a time where there's very little print yet left and the local online coverage seems to be diminishing. So how to get more residents signed up for the text and call system, which would be helpful in distributing information. Diving cost estimates for new capital projects sooner than later, as the manager has articulated. Sometimes this is more difficult to do based on working with the outside that we have and getting through certain project timelines. It also is heavily weighted on when our cash is certified annually as to what our, quote un, free cash position is. So sometimes this is due to lack of effort on the part of the town manager, but it's due to other extenuating circumstances that he needs to work within based on law and, and, and finance and, and things of the like. So, excuse me, presenting plans for a temporary substation in North Wilmington, that has already been done. We have gone through that. I will say that it's clear that residents certainly enjoyed having that coverage there. So if that doesn't speak to kind of an unspoken endorsement for the need for that. Like to see an established plan to have our own Wilmington Fire Department cover our own paramedic needs rather than sourcing from a third party. There will be upfront costs, but some members believe that it could be a revenue-producing endeavor, which will help fund positions and/or fire department initiatives in the future. There was desire to have a legal review once or twice a year of all cases with KP law. That will be forthcoming, we will be doing that. Reviewing all priorities twice a year, discussing a procedure for handling executive sessions. Should these meetings be held on one day to allow more time to address issues? You know, and, and some additional feedback as to the mechanics of how to handle some collective bargaining discussions. Information, you know, providing more information regarding non-union COLAR, information as it compares to union employees, discussions regarding budget priorities. You know, we received the budget, you know, pretty much right before the presentation. There was some desire to have that in draft form and get it earlier so that we can be forming questions and comments ahead of the evening of the meeting that we typically have. And discussing a policy on how to handle appointments and/or reappointments to committees and commissions. There's been some discussion about, you know, having it for a definitive timeline so that people would be more apt to want to sign up for a committee knowing that they're committing to a year at a time. The concern is that if people believe that they are signing on for life, they may not want to step forward because they believe it's too much of a burdensome commitment. And, you know, the desire to explore that selectmen appointment should have term requirements. the town manager appointments that have existing term requirements, that the town manager should inquire if this, there is interest to be reappointed. When a vacancy occurs, previous applicants who have expressed interest in these committees or commissions should be reviewed for consideration, assuming they are still interested to fill these vacancies. What areas can the town manager improve his performance? We talked about communication with the school department, being more proactive and bringing retail businesses to Wilmington, making a list of higher important items and reporting back to the Board of Selectment on non-Board of Selectment meeting weeks with a high-level status update. There's always room for improvement when communicating important information with board members, develop ways to delegate responsibilities to others and free up more time during the workday to be, have some, to ensure that there's successful engagement with employees on a regular basis at town hall. You know, being receptive to feedback, as has already been discussed. We talked about the capital improvement and economic growth of the town and also to continue to improve our communication with the state delegation on the part of the town manager. I know those efforts are, are there. It needs to be reciprocated back by our delegation as well. Any other suggestions that, or comments that board members wanted to make? One board member commented that the organization of key initiatives while not letting, you know, other issues fall off the wayside is important, while knowing it's a busy job, they just want to make sure that the work turnout is in line with the hours that are worked. People have expressed that they are pleased to see that Jeff has promoted town employees from within. And it's also, you know, is, is a good indication that you can recruit, you know, the employees from within, but that we should also be looking at other towns as well. There are definitely, you know, well-qualified people that are out there. I know the manager has expressed that for open positions, it's been a challenge in the municipal world across every different department to have people, we've had several vacancies, that it's been difficult to actually get people to apply. Some board members have expressed to, you know, the comments regarding executive sessions, some of these are kind of redundant, talking about vacancies for volunteer boards. And then the overall consensus is that Jeff is a tireless and dedicated worker with a wealth of knowledge and experience and that overall, all board members wished him well and hope he will embrace this performance evaluation as a tool for future improvement and growth as a town manager of Wilmington. And then that concludes essentially the composite. So at this point, I will pause and let people collect their thoughts. Again, this should be reflective of what you believe, you know, part and parcel of what you submitted in your performance evaluation. And as I said in the beginning, I'd be looking for board members to take a vote to adopt this as the performance evaluation of record. So I'll open it up.
I'll make a motion to adopt the performance appraisal.
Second.
With the evaluation.
Any discussion? Okay. Here we go, none of those in favor. Unanimous. Jeff, certainly, you don't have to comment, but you do have the option to comment if you so choose.
Madam Chair, excuse me, do we, do we need to sign these or is that just?
We should, but we can, we can do it in the room.
Okay.
Yep, sure.
I guess my only comments, you know, certainly the underlying themes seem to be, you know, I guess in terms of challenges with accepting criticism or constructive comments, certainly, you know, I, there have been instances where, you know, I perhaps have not or have not responded to comments as well as I, I could have or should have. I think, you know, quite frankly, there are other instances where I'm expressing an opinion and, you know, I think in part, that's what I'm paid to do and, you know, in some instances, it may not necessarily be, I may not necessarily agree with the board and certain or certain individuals on the board all the time. And I, I think that part of being the town manager is, is trying to exercise your best judgment and, and sometimes, you know, that's the circumstance. You know, in terms of attendance, you know, I guess it is a little disappointing to be voted or categorized as, as in the below expectation with respect to attendance. You know, there's no question that I, I'm here a lot. I think I've had maybe four days of time that I use sick time in the last 10 years and probably over the course of my 34 years here, I'm guessing less than 12 in terms of vacation time. I, I don't always, I don't regularly use my full complement of time, but I certainly stay within the constraints of the contract. You know, in terms of communication, I, I would say, just so that board members are aware, because there were comments here about, in some instances, not providing enough communication with personnel. You know, one of the things that does happen on a regular basis is all department heads are scheduled for a monthly meeting, you know, with the exception of perhaps July and August, some depending upon vacation schedules and so on. But generally speaking, I meet with department heads monthly. Inevitably, there are things that come up either on their end or my end and we either try to reschedule or maybe deal with it the next month. Also, I meet with department heads collectively once a month, again, with the exception of July and August. But, so during those sessions, you know, I'm talking with them about the issues at hand in their department and, you know, just getting a sense of where they are in terms of their various roles and responsibilities. Quite frankly, I, I don't have probably as much time as I should take to, you know, have individual one-on-one conversations with staff in the town hall and throughout town. You know, that's, I guess, an area to, to, to work on. You know, there's more often than not here at the town hall and not out and about, you know, with the library or the DPW or the police and fire station and so on. But, you know, I guess I, I need to try to work on that to some measure, recognizing that there are, you know, constantly deadlines, you know, and as we've seen this past year, notwithstanding all the regularly scheduled issues, whether it be the unfortunate circumstance that came up in North Wilmington with the accident that was totally out of the blue that has, you know, taken time that wasn't anticipated, the PFAS issue that came up that, again, was not anticipated, that required time and effort to deal with, this most recent water issue. There's any number of things that I can cite over the course of, you know, the last many years that inevitably take you off course and that's just part of the, part of the job. But I think it does speak to some measure to the challenges of trying to stay on task. But, you know, I'll continue to work on that.
Thank you. Any public comments? Here we go, none? Any announcements?
Can I make a comment on?
Yes.
Mr. Hulse? Just regarding monthly department head meetings and collectively meeting with your department heads. And this is, you know, I didn't know that you, you, it's almost like doubling up and I didn't know that you met that often with your department heads, which is good in some sense and may not in others. And do you think it'd make more sense to do it bi-monthly, you know, every other month with your department heads? You collectively meet with all of them monthly, but every other month? That way it, it frees you up a little bit more. I mean, you, how many department heads do you have?
Well, so there's eighteen.
Eighteen. And so eighteen department head meetings, a couple hours, and you're doing it monthly. Maybe you don't need to do it every month. Maybe you do it every other month or quarterly. That way it, it gives you some more flexibility. You talked about allowing yourself more time to, to walk the corridors or to go to DPW. So instead of meeting with the department head monthly, you take a ride over to the building department or you, you know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, it, it seems like it's, it's a lot. And, and I think sometimes it probably extends your day. You know, when you, you get eighteen department heads, you're doing it monthly. I can see why you're here late because sometimes those meetings can be excessive and, and sometimes they're needed. I mean, if they're needed, maybe they call you up and, you know, I can't wait until May to meet with you. I need to meet with you, you know.
Right.
In April.
So just to be clear, I mean, the, the.
It's how you run it, Jeff. I mean, I'm not saying how to do it. What I'm, if this is what your management is and you're comfortable doing it that way, then that's fine. All I'm saying is, do you need to meet with them every, every month?
Well, yeah, that's, certainly there, there may be instances where, depending upon the department, it's, it's not necessary. It's, you know, quite frankly, the larger departments, I think it is, whether it's, you know, DPW, police, fire, public buildings, there's just so much going on in those departments, whether it's issues related to personnel or projects or, you know, and it, but, but yeah, there may be, and, and the other thing is, quite honestly, at least, and perhaps it could be done every other month, but it also schedules time for some of the department heads that I don't see as often. I mean, and beyond that, obviously, if there are issues that come up that require more immediate attention, you know, I'm, I'm meeting with them anyways. The collective meetings with all 12, all of the departments, I think is good from the standpoint that, you know, we all can, can get apprised of the same information. For example, when we met earlier in the month here, you know, there was an update provided on the building projects or some of these things that other department heads may not necessarily have firsthand information on, but should be aware of. Or there may be some issues regarding personnel matters that, you know, apply to all departments that need to happen. So, but yeah, I mean, I can certainly give some thought to whether it's necessary to meet with every, and I would say the, the department heads, even though there are eighteen departments, I, I don't meet, for example, with the assessor and the treasurer-collector on a regular basis because, you know, with the kind of realignment that we did a few years ago, they report directly to the finance director. So, you know, that does take a couple of them off the plate, so to speak. But, you know, still, there may be instances, well, I'll certainly have conversations with them about particular issues. So, yeah, I'm sure there's better ways to manage my time than, than I'm working that I'm doing now. I mean, I, I put my all into it and.
It's obvious that you put your all into it. I don't think any of us have any doubt in that. But in your management style, you may want to continue to meet with them monthly. I'm just throwing that out there.
Sure.
You know, you may feel comfortable doing it that way. You've done it that way for the number of years you've been town manager and probably when you're the assistant town manager, you did it with people that, you know, in the same situation.
Right.
So, you know, it's all, I'm just trying to.
Sure. No, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other announcements or new business? Okay, moving on to important dates.
So under important dates, we have the farmer's market continuing through October 2nd, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. September 14th. September 14th, the, actually, it's, was slated to be on that date, but it has been canceled. The candlelight vigil is September 19th, Town Common, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I would note just also, while it's not on here, I believe there's expected to be a Rink and Recreation Committee meeting scheduled that evening on the 19th. September 24th is a, is the shredding day, the municipal parking lot, 9:00 a.m. to noon. Also, again, it wasn't listed here. I did hand this out because it came to my attention just recently. Also, on September 24th is the Fourth Annual, it's called the Guns and Hoses Charity Softball Game with the Police and Fire. It'll also be a cornhole tournament and it's intended to raise money for a couple of causes that the Police and Fire are both involved in. September 25th is the Wilmington's Birthday Incorporated 292 years ago. September 28th, the Town Hall and School Admin Committee will meet again, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. On the 10th of October, Town Hall will be closed. The 11th of October is another selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Moving on to salute to service, selectmen Ben Dale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And on behalf of the board, tonight, we salute Mr. Brian Wetzler, who has the Commander of the United States Coast Guard. Brian grew up in Wilmington and was active in youth sports in town. He was a 1985 graduate of Wilmington High School before attending the Naval Academy, where he earned the ranks of being an air-sea rescue helicopter pilot. So he spent his career serving our country and for that, we are grateful. Tonight, we salute him for his service. Thank you, Mr. Wetzler.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
First has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you and good night, everyone.